Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. We're going to start the council meeting. And with that, we will all stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Klein.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing. We have an invocation by Pastor Malcolm McPhail.
Thank you, Mayor Blankley, and all of the city council members. Thank you so much. We as clergy count it, it's a privilege to be able to come and share and pray for you and for our community. I always like to bring a little thought that might encourage and inspire you. I recently read a quote that said, "A leader defines reality, and he makes the appropriate decisions, decisions that are needed." How true it is. And I want you to know that I'm praying that the council, you continue to make really good decisions for the community and for our city as well. And I also want to pray that you will have wisdom and discernment in making those decisions, which any leader in any organization needs that kind of wisdom and discernment to make the decision for what is best for the community. So with that, may I ask that we would bow in a word of prayer? Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for being able to call upon you for wisdom and for clarity in the many decisions that government needs to make, people need to make, and leaders especially need to make when it comes to dispersing the wisdom and what needs to take place in the community. We pray for wisdom and discernment in decisions concerning our city that will encourage the citizens of our community. We pray, God, for continual your protection over our first responders, over the gates of our city that you will watch over us as we come in and as we go out, and that you would be our front guard and our rear guard, and keep our city safe and bring all of our first responders home safely after each watch. For that, we give thanks. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Can all be seated? Okay. Item 1.4 is City Clerk's Report on Posting the Agenda, and then followed by roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Blankley. The agenda was posted on Friday, February 23rd at 5:15 PM.
Would you like to go ahead with roll call?
Councilmember Brocko?
Here.
Councilmember Armandares?
Here.
Mayor Protem Marquez?
Marx. Okay, here.
Mayor Blankley?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
And Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
All present.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Under Orders of the Day, I would like to move 11.2, switch places with 11.2 and 11.1, so that we can go ahead and consent to the appointment of our temporary, our interim city clerk before getting to the item that most people are here to get to. So if that's all right with everybody, since that should only take a couple of seconds, okay, we'll, we'll switch the order of that. All right. Under Employee Introductions, Jimmy is going to introduce Heba.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Actually, I'm going to introduce spontaneously Beth Minor, who hopefully you appoint her later as the interim city clerk, because if you don't, we're, we're in big trouble. But Beth, yeah, Beth comes to us from the city of Palo Alto, over 30, almost 30 years there as a city, 12 years, or 26 years as a city clerk. And so we're really happy to have her. And so I want to introduce Beth Meyer first.
Okay.
And then second, I'd like to introduce Heba Elkindi. She is our new Public Works Director, and she comes to us from Nevada County with over 30 years' experience in public and private, public works experience. She's had stops in cities such as Sunnyvale, San Jose, Berkeley, and also worked for the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. She has a master's and a bachelor's and a master's in civil and environmental engineering, and she is a licensed professional traffic engineer, which I know we could really use some traffic help, so I'm very happy to have Heba here as well. Heba Elkindi, thank you.
Thank you very much. I am proud and honored to be part of the city of Gilroy. It actually came a full circle for me. When I moved from Canada to the U.S. back in '99, I worked as a consultant on projects for the city of Gilroy. So I'm proud to be back, and thank you for having me.
Thank you, and welcome. That brings us to ceremonial items. We have none. Council correspondents, we have none. Presentations to the council. This is the part of the agenda where anybody who wants to make public comment for something not on the agenda can speak. So if you're speaking on something that's on the agenda, please wait. But Beth, do we have any speakers for items not on the agenda?
We do, Madam Mayor.
Okay. How many?
We have four, we have two, we have three speakers.
Okay. Oh, I see. Jesus, Anna, and Robert. If the three of you could please be sure you're in the front row, and we'll start with Jesus. Are you here? Okay. There should be three people coming to the front. Okay?
I need to figure out how to...
How to do what?
Change it to Spanish.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Should we do English first while you're doing that?
Yes.
Okay. Can you start the clock? And we'll let Anna go. Excuse, we're going to wait for Spanish, if that's okay? All right. Okay? You should be able to see the, go ahead. You should be able to see the clock.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Gilroy, and I'm with the Department of Fore and Health and Public and Public Health. I am here today because we have a collection of issues, and this is actually for your police, off of your chief of police. We have some tenants that are being, they're being identified with the eviction process. So if the tenant is convicted, they cannot be locked out of their house, because I'm sure all of you guys know the rights for that.
Spanish to English?
Their doors cannot be locked, their longings cannot be put on their sheets. And when a tenant calls the police and let them know this is actually happening, the police says, "This is a civil matter," which is not a civil matter. We have to follow the laws to protect our tenants. And I brought this paper. I didn't make copies for you guys, but I will email it to the state, all the civil codes and the laws that have been violated at the moment. I spoke to an officer outside of the room, and he mentioned that there haven't been train property, attendant officials. So a tenant cannot be evicted if a judge hasn't made a judgment. So we would like for you guys to look into it, see what we can do to help our police officers recover rules, learn the laws, and protect the tenants. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is Robert Sapita ready?
There you are.
Sorry, couldn't see you behind the screen.
I can try.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. I stand before you again.
Come on, we're trying.
There we go.
Check, check. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, I stand before you again.
Come on, we're trying.
There we go.
Check, check. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, I stand before you again. I'm here to bring up two things that I witnessed. One was before a trip I took down to El Salvador, and one was this Sunday. And they both correlate in the same thing, and they actually do correlate with what I'm going to add on with my trip. But one was at Safeway, one was at Nob Hill. And coincidentally, you know, I was shopping, paid for my groceries, and I walk out, and this gentleman right in front of me was very slow, and he was walking out with a cart. And you don't need to be a brain surgeon to realize it's something suspicious. Obviously, I looked into his cart real quick just to see what was there, and it was maybe three bottles of alcohol, a case of Coca-Colas, and an ice cream cake. And I saw that he went from the bakery just straight outside. So obviously, he didn't pay. And then one of the helpers there that are employed at Safeway, they noticed that as well, and I was like, "Oh, did you, did he pay?" They're like, "I don't think he did." "Oh, of course, he didn't." And I said, "Well, there's nothing that can be done, right?" She's like, "No, we can't do anything." Well, I wonder why that is. I think it's because of Prop 47 that was passed in 2014. I, at the time, wasn't able to vote, but whoever was able to vote, voted in favor of that, obviously, because it passed. And then same thing happened at Nob Hill. As I parked, I was putting my groceries in my car, and, you know, very suspiciously, you know, two people walked in, and, I'm going to be honest, they looked ghetto. You can tell that they're not going to be there to buy something. You know, one had looked like his pants were falling down, obviously, it was falling down, but I guess that's the style, if I'm not mistaken. And what does that have to do with my trip from El Salvador? Well, there, crime has went from one of the most worst in the, in the world to one of the most safest. And it's obviously because of leadership, and that's what happens when criminals actually get punished. And unfortunately, that's not the case here, especially in California. And it's because of politicians like Zoe Loffren here. It's because of the establishment, Democratic Party, and of course, the running Republicans. So March 5th is primary election in, here in California. I encourage people to, at the very least, really consider who you're voting for, because it could determine your life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are we ready? Okay. I'm gonna, I, I might as well say this now, or I was going to say this later, but clapping is actually disruptive. So, and that's because this is supposed to be a safe place for everybody to express their views, and when you clap, you make it somewhat intimidating for someone who has an opposing view. So I'm going to say now what I would be saying later in the meeting, that everybody is allowed to speak, to say their part, and we're supposed to respect what everybody's opinion is without the clapping or noise of any kind, yelling out anything that disrupts the meeting and takes a position that is, is not yours to take unless you're the one at the microphone. Okay? So thank you for obliging by that. Are we ready with the wordly?
We're going to try.
Okay. So the speaker was Jesus. If you'd please come back. Okay? And you can go ahead and just speak in Spanish, and we will all see it in English. Okay?
Buenas tardes, a todos. Mi nombre es Jesús Alarcón, y yo vivo aquí en Gilroy, California, más de 30 años, y estoy rentando en Twin Pans Mobile Home. Y tengo un problema en los últimos dos años con nuevos, nuevos owners que compraron la propiedad, nos han aumentado la renta. Por ley sabemos que es el 5% el máximo, y nos están aumentando la renta a muchos de nosotros. Ya tengo a mis renteros que también están afectados, este, con el 17.5%. Necesitamos que ustedes hagan algo por nosotros, porque cada vez que, cada año que pasa, la renta sube y sube y sube, y nada más pagamos un espacio. Huyas pay the space, acé. Necesitamos que nos ayuden con esto, porque las rentas están tan altas, y aún así están subiendo más. No podemos hacer otra cosa. Si vivimos ahí, en las condiciones que estamos viviendo ahí, es porque somos familias trabajadoras pobres, que no podemos pagar tanta renta como algunas otras personas, ¿verdad? So, en este, muchos de nosotros trabajamos en el campo, y estamos escasos de recursos. So, a mis compañeros me pusieron como nuevo representantes de ellos. Soy el presidente de nuestro comité que hicimos en Twin Pans, y por eso estoy aquí representando a mis, a mis compañeros, o a mis renteros, a las personas que rentamos en ese lugar. So, nosotros queremos únicamente que nos apoyen, que nos ayuden a que esta persona traiga ese caso. Es más, ahorita tenemos representantes, nos representa caras, con una línea de abogados, que les mandaron una carta a ellos diciéndole que, que no podían seguir haciendo esto. Ellos no han, este, contestado nada aún todavía. Este, y ahorita, el, la persona esa, la que es manager, mandó por, por teléfono a decir algo así como que una amenaza por algo. Nosotros no queremos dejar de vivir donde estamos viviendo, no queremos que nos saquen de ahí, pero por eso estamos aquí, tratando de ver que nos ayuden ustedes, porque creo que es parte de la ley, y por eso estamos aquí. Muchísimas gracias a todos.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Again, I, I thought I just, okay, I'm sorry, but the clapping is the part that we just said. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. That concludes, yes, or were there other speakers?
Nope.
Okay. So that's it for 4.1. We move on to 5, which is Reports of Councilmembers. Councilmember Brocko?
No report.
Councilmember Armandares?
No report.
Councilmember Marx?
No report.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. From VTA's Developing and Implementing Transit-Oriented Communities Program pursuant to the Board adopted Transit-Oriented Communities Policy and Fiscal Year 24-25 Budget Authorization. This new program seeks to maximize mixed-use and mixed-income, equitable transit-oriented development projects on both public and private sites around VTA transit stations and high-capacity transit corridors. The program is focused on partnerships to support local public agencies and other stakeholders involved in the creation of transit-oriented communities. A new Transit-Oriented Community Grant in the amount of $750,000 will provide a key funding opportunity to support local public agencies, property owners, community organizations, and other diverse transit-oriented community stakeholders, working to further transit-oriented communities along the high-capacity corridor, transit corridors and stations in Santa Clara County. And from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, at the February Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board Meeting, the Board of Directors made appointments for the Legislative Ad-Hoc Audit, Finance, and Administration Committees. I was appointed to the Ledge Ad-Hoc Committee, which was created to meet as needed to address policy areas including affordability in rates, climate change mitigation, and fuel switching, a clean and reliable grid, health impact, safety, and equity. SVCE closed its third prepayment transaction for Clean Energy Project Bonds, which offers substantial savings to the agency, a benefit passed on to the customers through rate stability and maintaining a rate discount. The savings are approximately $7.7 million annually, and 13.1% discount on the cost of power representing about 77 megawatts of around-the-clock supply. The Clean Energy Project Bonds, valued at $1.1 billion, support the commitment of SVCE to financially responsible, responsible and sound, which allows the agencies to support customers in the community and their ongoing efforts to lower emissions for a safer, cleaner future. Community choice aggregators like, like SBC are securing significant savings from this kind of structuring, structured financing, which is a benefit exclusively reserved for the public entities. We leverage our ability to utilize municipal, municipal prepaid bonds to continue our investment in clean energy and delivering savings to our customers and communities. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
No report.
Councilmember Tovar?
No report tonight.
Okay. Mine is just a Caltrain policy group meeting, and it's more to just get the word out that we have those four trains. Electrification is coming to San Jose, but it will be coming, hopefully, in the fall. More word, more information on that, but that's what, what we're looking at. Okay. Future council-initiated items. Okay. Consent calendar. Do I, well, let me first ask, is there anyone, sorry?
No speakers.
Okay. No speakers, so no public comment?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Brocko and seconded by Councilmember Armandares to approve the consent calendar. And is this a?
It needs to be a roll, it needs to be a roll call, yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Yes. For 7.5 and 7.6 has to be a roll call.
Okay. So we'll just do all of them. Roll call.
Councilmember Brocko?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Marquez?
Yes. Marx.
Marx?
It's, it's Marx, and I would generally, and I would go last.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead. Mayor, or Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. All right. That passed unanimously. Okay. Under Bids and Proposals, 8.1. Award a contract in the amount of $408,134 to Blue Raster for Bicycle and Pedestrian Geographic Information Systems Consultant Services, and approve a budget amendment in the Measure B Fund. Bryce will be giving us the staff report.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. So a little bit of background, the city receives Measure B education encouragement funding allocations under the bicycle pedestrian program that's managed by VTA. These expanded, these funds can be used for non-capital expenditures, meaning no infrastructure, we can't do physical improvements, but we can use them for services, supplies, and staff time, but only for education encouragement activities associated with bicycle pedestrian and active transportation. The GIS mapping and encouragement resources have been on the annual program of project on a recurring basis for several years, at least as far back as 2020, if not before. The city issued an RFP in mid-December and received six proposals. Oh. Here. Okay. There we go. There we go. So the project entails the following: using GPS to map out bicycle pedestrian paths in the city, as well as other features in the network, to educate and encourage active transportation; incorporate other bicycle pedestrian activities; create the foundational GIS layers for our bicycle and pedestrian networks, which will be expanded as new infrastructure and improvements are made to the networks; provide GIS data to GPS mapping programs to incorporate when residents and visitors utilize these programs; and create a city-owned webpage that allows access to information to plan the use of bicycle pedestrian networks; announce various programs and events that are bicycle pedestrian-related or friendly. And just rather use some jargon there, so GPS, obviously, a global positioning system, and GIS is our geographic information system. So on the screen are the six proposals that we received, as well as the value of scoring there in alphabetical order. We are selecting Blue Raster. As can be seen, it is the highest bid amount, $408,000. I'll go ahead and come into the next slide, and we'll explain why. So staff has recommended Blue Raster because, as you see, it's the highest-cost proposal, but that's because it's the only proposal that met the methodology requirement that we put out for it, which is physical, GPS locations, and mapping of the sites. They received the highest score for methodology because of this, and one of the higher scores for firm and staff qualifications by the reviewers. And the physical GPS mapping is, is important because this is the foundational layer. So other layers we built, or other information we entered based on the data that we input as part of this process. And so, since we're building upon them in the future, we need to make sure that the data that we receive is the highest quality possible to make sure that we don't have an error at the beginning that will affect any other additional data sets that we, in the future, load in. We did receive a request from one of the vendors early on to use aerial, street imagery and AI. However, in talking with our GIS analyst who had done similar work a year before, it still requires significant cleanup of data, and errors and accuracies are high even under the technologies that exist today. So for those reasons, we responded no, and unfortunately, the other proposals included remained with AI and street and aerial imagery. So alternatives, council may determine to not award the contract, reject all proposals, and revise the solicitation essentially to rebid, or reject all proposals and direct the project not to proceed forward. The fiscal impact, as mentioned, is $408,134. As for Measure B Bicycle Pedestrian Program, we've been using the full allocation that we currently have of $265,000, and VTA has already approved that we can get reimbursed the remaining $143,000 as those allocations come up year-to-year. So staff's recommendation is award a contract to Blue Raster for the $408,134 for Bicycle Pedestrian Geographic Information Systems Consultant Services, and authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement and any non-financial amendments to the agreement that may arise. And then B, adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 24 adopted budget to increase appropriations in the Measure B Fund by $408,134. And the next steps, if approved, staff will finalize the contract with Blue Raster and commence the project. And that completes the presentation. Happy to address any comments or questions. Bryce?
Can you go back to the?
Okay. Hang on. Sorry. I, I will take Councilmember questions in just a second. But to clarify, this report went out asking for manual, right?
Correct.
The solicitation went out, so those who responded, the other three who all responded with using AI or anything other than manual, were not following the requested information in the?
Correct. And it was, it was only Blue Raster, so the other five did not submit.
Okay. That's all I wanted to make sure was clear. Okay. Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah. Can you go back to, just, yeah, the different companies? So, again, I understand, I mean, that's huge discrepancy there. I mean, we're looking at, you know, almost $300,000 more, right? And in seeing that, what you're saying kind of outlined, wouldn't it have been to our benefit to take it back out for another bid? Because I, I can't justify paying someone $300,000 more than we're paying, you know, someone else.
Yeah. So again, the, the price difference you're seeing is the logistics side. So the others are proposing to drive around with cars, use street imagery to take pictures, and for some of them, a few exceptions, to get out of the cars, and again, it's all image-based off of, essentially iPads, for example, for one of them. And so there's inherently a concern of inaccuracy, because camera angles, using AI to interpret what was in here, if, let's say, something was blocked. You kind of see similar thing when you use Google Maps and go to Street View, and traffic signs are blocked, that type of thing. So Blue Raster, and what our proposal was, was to actually come out physically with GPS, readers for lack of a term, and actually physically map every single instruction. That's, that's the biggest cost component, because it's a lot of personnel time. And so that's why they have such a big difference. Now, so when staff put this together, the, the physical location and mapping it that way provides the highest accuracy. It is a high-cost item. It is considered higher accuracy. If council wishes to, for us to go back out to bid, accept AI, I mean, that is a council option, if that's what council's goal is.
Yeah. Because, again, kind of looking at the, the differences, obviously, for a company that's in Arlington, Virginia, that we're going to give $400,000 to, right? So anyhow, I have several questions. So I, again, in reading the, you know, the report, I understand that there's no funding needed from the general fund for this project.
Correct.
Right. However, it would, I would like to know, when we look at this project, how many years do you anticipate or estimate that VTA will take to fully reimburse, reimburse $143,000? It's still?
Correct. It'll probably take, sorry, take approximately three fiscal years.
Three fiscal years.
Correct. Okay. The amounts that we receive for Measure B E and E funds fluctuates a little bit from the mid $50,000 to $45,000, which depends on the year and the form of how much they take in.
Right. And knowing that we're using kind of this pot of money, are there any other educational or encouragement projects that the city has slated that could be completed with this?
Yeah. So there's enough, the only events that we've had paid, at least in the recent time, has been the Bike to Wherever event, received some funding from that. And then there's occasionally promotional programs, like Social Media Push, but, you know, we're usually averaging, you know, maybe a couple thousand on the higher end of the years. And so that's what's, the funds have accumulated over the years because we've, have used them, but that's also a part because we've had this large project that was on the program of projects.
Okay. All right. I'll save some questions for later.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And knowing that we're using this pot of money, are there any other educational or encouragement projects that the city has slated that could be completed with this?
Yeah, so there's enough, the only events that we've had paid, at least in the recent time, has been the Bike to Wherever event, received some funding from that. And then there's occasionally promotional programs, like a social media push, but, you know, we're usually averaging, you know, maybe a couple thousand on the higher end of the years. And so that's what's, the funds have accumulated over years because we've haven't used them, but that's also a part because we've had this large project that was on the program of projects.
Okay. All right, I'll save some questions for later.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next is Councilmember Bracco.
Bryce, Measure B was the one we voted on for road repairs, right?
Correct, sir.
So where is it being spent on this kind of stuff?
So Measure B, Measure B Act, for lack of a term, has several different pockets. In addition to the local streets and roads and highway funds are the largest components, but they have a small component included in that for bike and pedestrian activities, bike and pedestrian program. And some of those funds are allocated out to different cities for education and encouragement programs, which is what we're trying to use for this contract award.
Agreed.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. I want to bring everybody back to when we did the sidewalk survey. Remember, that was GIS too, because we kind of knew that GIS is the future. That's how we're able to, you know, pinpoint things on maps and then actually, you know, even chart out budgets and stuff like that to be able to put down, you know, hey, we need to fix this in five years, here's where it's located, how big it is. I think that was, that one was pretty expensive too, to do that citywide. But this is the future, and this is how those can put in there. One reason too why we have such a huge pot is that a lot of other cities were, I think Cupertino might have done the GIS, but a lot of them have used this to hire staff, right? To, like, say for us as school coordinators and active transportation coordinators and stuff like that. And we've never really wanted to go down that route. We've sort of wanted to use it for something else. So this would be the opportunity for staff to not only be able to update this, because we don't have anybody on staff that can update a new bike trail by AI, but we do with GIS. And at the same time too, you know, since we're not going to go down the route of hiring somebody, you know, within staff, this will give the opportunity for the general public to be able to just, this will sort of like be their interface to us. And I do know that the Arts and Culture Commission, along with the Parks and Rec Commission, have been partnering up as well too. And one of the things that they want to do is place a mapping layer, because remember, these are all layers. They want to put a layer for, like, all the public art that's out there that we've approved to put in there. Stuff like doggy bag holders, access to water, like those type of things. And this could even really help those events that are coming down, or events in the city like La Fronde Festival, Poppy Jasper Festival, where the city could, if we're partnering with them, they could literally just enter in where all these events are, or let's say they're daily or whatever. And that's something that's pretty easy just to input. So, I mean, I look at it as like a tourism, you know, platform and stuff like that that everybody can use as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes, thank you for your report, Bryce, but I have some questions about this and some concerns. According to this report, you're going to be mapping out what is on trails. I'm going to use Uvis Levy as an example. So if I was brand-new to Gilroy, I would click on this link, I'd find out where the watering spots are, where the benches are, where information boards are. You know, if we were a big metropolis, I could see where this would be real handy because new people would be coming to Gilroy not knowing. But Gilroy and Morgan Hill are small. And if you want to know where you can go hiking, you can ask. If you want to know where you want to go biking, you can ask. You don't need to have a $408,000 project to map all this out to click on the link. And when I read through this, I noticed it's for pedestrian and bicycle activities, and I was thinking how nice it would be to take our $266,000 and spend it on the taxpayer with maybe bike events, and I thought Councilmember Hilton would be really excited about these and would be suggesting ideas on how to get pedestrians biking and people out and about. But to spend it on something that we have no guarantee people are going to use, or very few are going to use, it just seems like a real waste of money when we can go into the schools and put programs together to get kids involved in biking, and we could plan carnivals, we can plan bike events out of Christmas Hill Park. I just feel like Parks and Rec Commission could really come up with some great ideas on how we can spend this money, and then we wouldn't have to use the extra money that ETA is going to reimburse us, but we could use it for other things in later years.
We need staff to do that.
Pardon me?
We need staff to do that.
And we do. We have staff.
We don't have staff to do that.
I don't believe that. We have a commission that also can help. It's where there's a will, there's always a way.
And they recommended that.
Well, okay. Let's not interrupt each other, please. Thank you. Right now, Carol Marks is speaking.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Does anyone else from the council wish to speak?
I would just say, yeah, I do.
Okay. Did you have something to say, to add before I go to Councilmember Armandares?
I just would like to clarify that this is a system that I've used in past employment for a number of jurisdictions. It's far superior. And in developing a layer, not just for the bike and pet facilities and mapping that would be interactive for the public to access online, but also in developing a layer that we could utilize when designing. It will interact, we could layer the underground utilities, for example, the above-ground utilities such as streetlights. It speeds up the process and makes it cheaper to design. For example, we will be applying for an ATP grant that's due on June 17th. Having such mapping could even save us time and effort and cost in preparing the grant application.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I have another question.
Okay.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I've got Councilmember Armandares, and then I'll go back to Councilmember Marks. Okay?
Thank you. I think, you know, having been born and raised here, I know Gilroy always feels like a small community, but geographically, right, in terms of space, we are one of the larger communities in terms of acreage. And I think that our community members would benefit, in fact, from this being accessible technologically, right, or digitally. There's trails in Gilroy that I'm not familiar with, you know, at all, in terms of where they start, where they end, what kind of amenities are there available. I think as a, you know, if my parent, if my kids were small, I'd want to know where the benches were, where the shady spots were, if there was restrooms, things like that. And then also, having coordinated the Taman Festival, having that access to this stuff digitally is really helpful, right? Because you have to lay out for permits, you have to lay out routes for traffic, where the buses are going to be rerouted to, all the kind of detailed stuff, and to have it digitally, it makes it just incredibly efficient. And again, Gilroy might feel like a small town still to many of us because we're, you know, this is where our roots are, but to somebody coming into Gilroy, it's a huge expanse of land, and I think this is a good investment. And like our new staff person just mentioned, it probably will come out more cost-efficient in the end.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Bryce, I just have one more question, but this is specifically for bike and hiking trails, correct?
Correct. This is bicycle pedestrian.
So this is not festivals? This is not underground sewer lines? You know, it's just, this contract is just for bike and hiking trails?
It's bike and hiking trails, but it's also identifying, as mentioned, those amenities. So benches, fix-it stations for bicycles.
On the trails.
On the trails. And then it can also be identified to show locations for community events that might be, you know, set up and established and identify those locations.
In that area. In that area. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I see at least one member of the public who would like to speak, so I'd like to open public comment. Is it just one?
Just one.
Okay. Ron Kirkish, would you go ahead and take the mic?
Good evening, Mayor, council, community. I agree with Councilwoman Marks. We, this is a lot of money for something that, how many people are going to use, utilize? We have much more serious needs in this community. We need more police officers, we need more fire officers. So it's my opinion that we should not be wasting our money on this project. Thank you.
Okay. Closing public comment, and wanting to remind the council that this money can only be used for bike and ped educational purposes. It can't be for anything else. So, okay. All right. Are there any other council members wishing to speak? Because all I see on my board are the same ones that have already spoken.
Yeah, I can't put my name in there either.
Okay, so you want to speak again?
Yes, please. After Tovar.
Okay. Councilmember Hilton.
Go ahead.
Okay. So on top of that, yeah, this is strictly for a certain use. And it's a use it or lose it. If we don't use it, we will lose it. That's important.
Yes, but we can use it.
Thank you. If we choose to hire like a staffer or coordinator with it, we're going to burn through it really fast. But, you know, throwing events and parties to try to encourage biking is great, but we don't have a motivated staff to do that monthly, even weekly. And you can't burn through that kind of money on stuff like that either. Another thing that for, you know, for Public Works is further maintenance. So this is not just for trails that are out there, it's for, you know, all the existing bike lanes that are out there. And I can tell you, as a past member of the Gilroy Bike and Ped Commission, that when the city engineer was trying to update a bike map, we had one from like 2016. There was nobody keeping track of where all the future bike lanes were happening and where they were going. I actually rode the entire system myself and charted it out on a map in engineering to help them out, at least to start. So we still don't have a really good way to keep track of that. And if there's certain problems that pop up on any of these, you know, bike lanes or whatever out there, this is a great way for staff, for Public Works, to be able to highlight it, take a picture of it, have the exact cost estimate for it, put in a budget request for it. I mean, all that's for GIS. The last thing I want to mention is that we are a tourist destination, right? Visit Gilroy, we have a member of the Visit Gilroy Board up here, Tom Klein, and we're a recreation destination. We do active tourism through our hotels. Many more hotels are coming through here. So to think that we're just all residential houses is not true. And I know Frank's not here from Visit Gilroy, but we hear from him at least twice a year of all the tourism activity that we're trying to do, right? Because that creates TOT, brings money back in, but we can do stuff, you know, to keep that going. So, thank you.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My question's been answered.
Okay. Councilmember Klein, do you have anything to say?
Well, just, Jimmy, as far as if we had a staff driven, I mean, cost-wise, how do you quantify that? Or could you even put a cost on that if we tried to do it ourselves?
Well, the, this is certainly a more cost-effective manner. We pay salaries, benefits, retirement and all those things, and we can hire a consultant that does the workforce. We don't manage it. We don't have turnover. We don't have trouble recruiting for a position that's only funded for a couple of years. So it's a significant challenge for us. That's why, you know, we did recommend that we go with a consultant.
Okay. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would like to motion that we approve the contract, $408,000 to Blue Raster for the bicycle and pedestrian GIS system.
Second. Hilton.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the contract. Can we include in that, may I include both together or no?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Would you both be willing to include in that adopting a resolution amending the fiscal year 24 adopted budget to increase appropriations in the Measure B Fund, Fund 212 by $408,134?
Accept.
Okay. So that's done and seconded. So that is a roll call or digital?
Roll.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
No.
Mayor Blakely?
I'm saying yes. That's four to three, right?
Yes.
Wow. Okay. All right. 8.2. Award a contract to Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. for the design of two traffic signals, Project Number 24, RFP PW498, in the amount of $149,854. To approve a project contingency of, and approve a project contingency of $29,971 for a total project expenditure of $179,825 for design services. Heba's going to give us this staff report.
Thank you. This agenda item is requesting the council approval to award a contract to Kimley Horn and Associates to design and prepare the bid documents for two new traffic signals. The new signals will be located at Luchesa Avenue, Church Street, and the second at Monterey Street, IWOF Avenue. These new signals would clearly identify the right-of-way. It will minimize the conflict between pedestrians and vehicular traffic movements and improve safety conditions, as well as improve the general operational conditions and level of service. These aerial photos shows the locations of the two new signals at Luchesa Avenue and Church Street and Monterey Street and IWOF Avenue. I should mention that these two new signals will have, will be equipped with pedestrian countdown signals and improvements to the pedestrian crossing facilities. The signal at Monterey and IWOF Avenue will be interconnected with the signal at the railway tracks. So the coordination with UP is taken into account when planning the schedule for the The RFP for the design and the bid documents preparation was issued in December, on December 29th of last year. We received three proposals from Hexagon, I Terrace, and Kimley Horn. Kimley Horn was selected as the most qualified based on the submitted proposal in relation to the work scope. The proposed budget for this project is almost $150,000 in addition to 20% contingency for about $30,000 for a total cost of almost $180,000, which would be funded using the TIF, the Traffic Impact Fund. With regards to community consultation and outreach, these two new signals were requested by community members over the past years. I should also mention that the intersection of Luchesa Avenue, Church Street was included as part of the traffic analysis that was conducted for the ICE Center. And there is currently no additional outreach planned as part of the design phase. However, public noticing and outreach will be conducted as part of the construction. Staff is recommending council approval of, to award the contract to Kimley Horn and Associates in the amount of $149,854, in addition to the contingency in the amount of $29,971 for a total project expenditure of $179,825 for the design of the two traffic signals under the Public Works Project Number 498. And authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. Next steps, subject to the approval of City Council tonight, the contract with Kimley Horn will be executed, and we could commence the work next month. The design and bid documents are expected to be completed by the end of October of this year. And following the processing of the bidding for the construction phase, we're expecting the construction will be carried out between March and July of next year. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I see no one, okay, I do. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. I'm glad to see that intersection, especially the Monterey and IWOF one, because for years I've been working with some of the advocates down there, right? That's why we had the rapid flashing beacon and then no turn left. It's just such a heavily congested area, especially for parents that are waiting. One thing that I'd like to just throw out there as a suggestion of, once the intersection light is actually in there, to be able to utilize that leading pedestrian interval that you know that you can put on there, give the pedestrians that are going to be coming out of there in all directions, give them that extra three to seven seconds to get into that intersection, I think would go a long way. And it's a soft touch that most of the general public will have no idea about, but much appreciated for everyone that's crossing there, and especially those that are trying to make that quick right-hand turn, right? As everybody's waiting on the side, that, you know, they won't try to beat the pedestrians with the light, so thank you.
Yes, understood.
All right.
Thank you.
I, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay. No, my question is just with the contingency portion of it, because I too, I know these are long overdue and things that the communities ask for, and I'm glad to see them going in. And I know that you'll, you know, we'll get them in the way they're supposed to get in. But sometimes I see the contingency at 10%, sometimes 15%, and lately I've been seeing more 20s. So I'm just wondering, who is making that call and why?
We're making this call based on engineering experience. And for this particular case, because we will be consulting with UP, they have their own review process. We're expecting that it will take a number of months, and there will also be a charge for their review, which is not included in the Kimley Horn proposal.
Okay. So that's what you're, why the 20% is 20%?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for this report, actually. You answered my question. First of all, I'm glad to see it's a local business that we're giving money to. But my question in regards to, in October, when the designs are completed, you're saying that we should have the lights up and completed by March of 2025?
No, the construction will take place between March until the end of July of 2025. So it would be completed by the end of July, based on our current schedule.
Got it. So you don't anticipate, because as you know, there's always delays, but you don't anticipate any delays for this to be done by July of 2025?
Hopefully not. We try to include the review process as part of setting up the schedule, and we'll try to aim to complete it by then.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Beth, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay. Closing.
Motion to approve.
Closing. Good. Closing public comment, and go back to a motion that was made by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Bracco to award, right? To award the contract, okay, in the amount of $149,854 plus the contingency for a total of $179,825, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. Okay? So that's, that's digital?
Yes.
If our screens are working, some of us are having a little trouble.
Yeah. How do I?
How do I?
There it is. Yeah, but it's not, you can't vote yet.
Let's just do?
Yeah.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquette, Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilman?
Marks?
Marks, yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Heba. All right, that brings us to item nine, which is public hearings, we have none. Ten is unfinished business, we have none. 11.2, we're going to get to right before 11.1, and that's consent of the appointment of Beth Miner as interim city clerk, retired and new in it effective February 27th, 2024, and adoption of a resolution of the City Council, the City of Gilroy approving the appointment and employment agreement. Take it away, Leanne.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the Gilroy community. The item tonight is to consent the appointment of Beth Miner, as the mayor just mentioned. The city clerk position recently became vacant, and to ensure continuity in the coordination of the city clerk's office, it is recommend that we consent this appointment and approve the resolution authorizing the employment agreement. There's a lot of CalPERS rules that we have to follow, because Ms. Miner is a CalPERS retired and new tenant. She is limited to working no more than 960 hours in a fiscal year. She has the background and experience to cover this position while we do the recruitment, and that recruitment started yesterday. And so with her experience, she'll be able to hit the ground running. In fact, we, as you know, she's sitting there in the chair, and we've already hired her as an extra help temporary person, which is a step we can do right away before we can get before council to do the official interim appointment. The staff report also notes all of the duties and functions that she'll perform in this interim assignments, and the other particulars associated with the employment agreement. But I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you might have regarding this interim appointment.
Thank you, Leanne. All right, council members, do you have any questions for Leanne? Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. And thank you, Leanne, for that, and thank you, Beth, for the work that you're stepping up, I appreciate that. May I only mention that the recruitment has already started. What is the timeline for kind of next steps?
The recruitment began yesterday. It's going to stay open until April 2nd for applications and resumes, and then we will have a screening process, interview, selection process, and then someone will be appointed to the position. So we're hoping that all of those steps are completed, and we have someone official in the chair by no later than June 1st.
June 1st, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, we don't.
Okay. Okay, and with that, I'd certainly like to make a motion that we consent to the appointment of Beth Miner as our interim city clerk.
I'll second.
Okay, so I made the motion and seconded by Councilmember Marks.
And adopt a resolution, presumably?
And adopt the appropriate resolution.
We should be able to vote.
That's a roll call vote, though.
A roll call.
Because of the resolution.
You're right, correct. Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, unanimous. Thank you for being here.
You may change your mind after tonight.
Well, okay, so here we go. Can I now ask Beth to fix my computer, because I messed it up? As our first acting city clerk.
Oh, let me see if it's just the same. Yeah. Okay. Can you help me? I do it every time.
Okay, so while he's helping her fix her computer, we are now on to what is 11.1. This is consideration of a resolution that we're going to, I expect, I anticipate there's a lot of public comment.
Approximately 75 at this point.
Okay, so we're going to, everybody will have one minute each, and the way we're going to do this is I will call 10 at a time, and if your name is called, you need to be in this front row, because once we start, everybody gets one minute to speak, and as soon as that minute is up, I will repeat the next name, and the clock will start. So if you're walking from the back of the room, that will cut into your minute. So please be present if you want your whole minute to speak. That's how we have to do it in order to allow everybody to speak. I'd like to reiterate, it is the third time I'm saying it now tonight, but I hope everybody will understand, this is not a place for clapping or intimidating speakers. Speakers are supposed to feel free to speak their mind, just as anybody else would, without the feeling of animosity in the room because of clapping, or no clapping, or booing, or noise of any kind. So I would appreciate that, otherwise I'll have to stop the meeting, take a break, and if it continues, those who are doing it will be escorted out. Okay? That's how we're going to proceed. So our, this is item, okay, 11.1. Bryce, are you going to do a staff report on this?
I can do a report.
Okay, you're going to do it, my thing says Bryce. Okay, so we'll do, here are the staff report, and then we'll go straight into public comment, and then we can have council discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is a council-initiated item that was approved by council to place on the agenda at your last meeting on February 5th. The staff in preparation for this item collected several samples from other cities that had considered ceasefire resolutions, and also had submissions from a few council members as well. Staff makes no recommendation, and it is up to the council to deliberate and decide what form, if any, they would like to do a ceasefire resolution. That concludes my report.
Okay, so here, starting then with public comment, okay, I'm opening the public comment period, and so the first 10 are, and I apologize for pronunciation, Sarit Polifoy, Rita Gutierrez-Fishu, Susan Myers, Folo Wiseman, Ronit, Ronit Rose, Rabbi Faith Joy Dantowitz, Bonnie Waterman, Jackie Stevens, and Anna Stefanenko. So if you were called, please be ready, because we're going to go from one minute to the next. Okay, so soon as you please start the clock, go ahead.
Dear council member, my name is Sarit, and I am a Santa Clara County resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to oppose the idea of the ceasefire resolution, because ceasefire is a misleading term in the context of Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Ceasefire, or udna, in Arabic, is a term that describes a temporary pause to get more weapons. After a udna ends, we will witness another round of war and death. I think that since no one wants to put the foundation for the next round of violence, it is better to reject the resolution and call Hamas to bring back all the Israeli hostages and end this war. My children see the picture and videos of the hostage, and they ask me, mommy, why Hamas did not release the hostage? Did I know their parents missed them? And mommy, will bad guys take me because I'm Jewish? Please show our children that you care and reject the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rita.
Good evening, Mayor Blakely and city council members. My name is Rita Gutierrez-Fisher. I'm a resident of Gilroy, I'm sorry, with over 50 years of involvement in this community. I am a founding member of Congregation Emmett, our local Jewish community, and have, that has been in existence for 46 years, and I'm currently vice president of the Board of Directors of Congregation Emmett. I'm here to express my view on your possibility of passing a resolution regarding the war in Gaza. Per your city charter, section 400 and section 409, I would question whether this is the proper forum to discuss and vote on a resolution that really involves a federal government policy. If the citizens of Gilroy want to really influence the United States' position on the war, they should contact their federal representatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Myers?
My name is Susan Myers. I have lived in Gilroy for 30 years. I'm a member of Congregation Emmett, the founder of the Interfaith Community of South County, and the last time I was here, you honored me with a proclamation to Gilroy to stand united against hate. There are serious issues that this council must address related to the fears of children in our schools, and swastikas and hate speech on the walls of our beautiful Christopher High School. A Gilroy City resolution related to the horrific war in the Middle East will be counterproductive, resulting in discord in our community. If you do feel you have all the information you need to pass a resolution, I strongly urge you to look to the language of the City of Santa Cruz Resolution, acknowledging the suffering of the people of the Middle East, affirming our shared humanity, and wish for peace, and declaring the City of Santa Cruz a specific month where all can have the opportunity to participate in that.
Thank you, Susan. I'm sorry, the minute is up.
Around the world.
Got it. Folo?
Israel is accused of genocide towards Palestinians, while in reality, Israel is their biggest supplier of aid, while Hamas uses Palestinians as human shields to maximize casualties. Hamas uses hundreds of millions of dollars annually received for humanitarian aid to build tunnels underneath schools, mosques, and hospitals to conduct terror operations. Israel creates evacuation corridors for Palestinians to locations with food, water, and medical supplies. Israel drops leaflets, makes phone calls, and uses loudspeakers to announce impending operations, while Hamas does everything it can to stop these evacuations by blocking and firing on evacuating civilians. Hamas's hands are stained with the blood of every Israeli and Palestinian death. Passing this resolution would be a rallying cry for more hatred in this community. Save Gaza from Hamas and bring our hostages home.
Thank you. Ronit Rose?
Dear council members, on October 7th, we experienced the most brutal attack on Israel. Hamas terrorists invaded Israel, they burned people alive, raped women, murdered kids, and took hundreds of hostages. Our lives took 180 degrees shift. Unsemitic acts have jumped all over the Bay Area in California. Colleges are resenting Jewish students, my daughter chose distance learning to avoid harassments. As a voting member of the community, I choose to live here in unity and peace. International affairs should not be discussed here or interfere with our lives. With that said, I'm calling for your voice not to come up with a resolution for a ceasefire. This resolution will only tear our community apart and create more chaos. As a kindergarten teacher, I teach my kids to love, wish for peace, and to be a good neighbor and a citizen. What are you teaching your kids?
Thank you. Rabbi Faith Joy?
Mayor Blankley and council members, my name is Rabbi Faith Joy Dantowitz, and I'm the Rabbi of Congregation Emmett, founded in Gilroy. I urge all council members to vote for no ceasefire resolution. I recently returned from a visit to Israel to bear witness to the Hamas terror attacks of October 7th, including meeting with hostage families who are still waiting for the return of their loved ones. I witnessed the existential pain felt by my rabbinic colleagues in Israel as they support hostage families, bury victims of terrorism and war, and support the traumatized population. My heart breaks for the suffering of Israelis and Palestinians. When I learned about Gilroy City Council engaging in global affairs, instead of feeling a sense of support, I and members of the Jewish community felt dread and attack. My congregation has built close connections with the Interfaith Community. The role of the Gilroy City Council is not to address the problems of the Middle East, but to tend to the local needs of the community. The conflict in the Middle East is causing antisemitism and Islamophobia to rise locally, and therefore, a ceasefire resolution will cause division amongst individuals in our community.
Thank you. Bonnie Waterman?
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Bonnie, and I stand before you as a Jewish Gilroy resident. I think we all want peace, but we cannot have peace without bringing home the hostages. My heart aches for my Jewish brothers and sisters, and for the Palestinians, too. If Hamas were to put down their weapons and return the hostages, the war would be over. This war is occurring over 7,000 miles away, and I am left wondering why my small city wants to pass this ceasefire resolution. What stake does Gilroy have in all of this? I am so glad, thank God, we have peace here in Gilroy, but let's keep it. I worry that this ceasefire resolution could create situations and potentially divide our community. The amount of antisemitism and Islamophobia in the U.S. is out of control. Ultimately, this council's decision can bring a bit of comfort during this incredibly difficult time. I urge you to please allow the federal government to handle the foreign affairs.
The minute is up, I am very sorry. Jackie, Jackie Stevens, followed by Anna, and then Rabbi Ilana Baird would be next.
I hope you all know how painful this is for us to get up here and speak to you about this. My name is Jackie Stevens. I've been a proud Gilroian since 1987. I just recently retired after a long teaching career, serving the students of both Morgan Hill Unified School District and Gilroy Unified School District. I am here to respectfully ask that you not pass any ceasefire resolution regarding the Israeli Hamas war. I had submitted my comments in writing to you prior, frankly, out of fear that my public statements will be met with the type of hate my friends have experienced elsewhere in the Bay Area. These movements passed in other municipalities have only served to stoke hate and create division in our communities. They should be discouraged on that basis alone. The fact that there are a lot more people calling for the resolution does not mean it's the right thing to do. I hope that we can take this opportunity to learn from our neighbors, and in the spirit that has always made Gilroy great, work towards creating connections versus driving wedges between us.
I'm sorry, I have to cut people off, okay. That was Jackie. Anna, you're next, and then Rabbi Ilana Baird, and then I'll go to the next 10.
Hello, my name is Anna Stefanenko. Today, you will hear people spoken about, speaking about children dying in Gaza, but they usually forget to mention that the reason all of these children are dying is Hamas. The blood of civilians is on Hamas hands. A senior Hamas official was asked in the interview, since you have built 500 kilometers of tunnels, why haven't you built bomb shelters? And he answered that it's responsibility of the United Nations to protect civilians. Among documents of one of the terrorists who participated in the October 7th attack, Idea found records from an Israeli hospital where his son was successfully treated for cancer. What kind of people would kill the savers of their own children? The only people who actually seem to like dying Palestinian children are Hamas. They use these children to raise the anti-Israel movement around the world. They use these children to pressure Gilroy City Council to accept this ceasefire resolution.
Thank you. Rabbi Ilana Baird, I'm sorry, thank you.
Hello, my name is Rabbi Ilana Baird. Think of attending a peaceful celebration, perhaps a garlic one, a garlic festival. And then it was invaded by murderous gunmen, killing, raping, shooting, taking hostages, children, grandparents. But someone is in far Russia, in Russian town, would like to make a resolution so you can protect your family. And something like this is happening right now, right here. The goal is just clear, to bring damage to our Jewish community. The people in my community really concerned that those ceasefire resolutions lead to more violence, murder, and emboldens of antisemitism. Gilroy is famous for its garlic festivals. It's not famous for its antisemitism. Please, let's keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next 10. Michael Oshin, Nancy Fishman, Noah Raviv, Batshiva Raviv, Ion, or Elan Stolovarsky, Ferret Stolovarsky, Hanosh Raviv, Reina Dennis. Okay, so let's please go ahead and start with Michael.
Hi, I'm Michael Oshin. I'm a 50-year resident of Gilroy and one of the original founders of the Jewish, the South County Jewish community. Basically, I just don't think that the City of Gilroy should be getting involved in international politics, and I think that the only thing that's going to come of it is more division, and it won't do us any good to create more tension and division between the communities. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Nancy?
My name is Nancy Fishman. I'm a social scientist. Most of us are here tonight to acknowledge the current Middle East crisis. I suspect all of us sympathize with the innocents who have become casualties. Now I have to ask myself two questions. One, is it appropriate for a municipality to weigh in on geopolitical conflicts? And two, what are the consequences of creating any kind of resolution? I believe adopting a resolution that takes a position about what other cities, countries, states, or counties should do is an inappropriate action for a municipality. It is dangerous for Gilroy to abandon a position of neutrality to favor a political position. Adopting a resolution will most certainly create divisiveness. Why would Gilroy want to do this? It would be more appropriate to declare that Gilroy stands against hate, against war, against violence. These general principles give citizens a sense of...
Thank you, it's been a minute. Okay, Noach, N-O-A, N-A-O- N-O-A-C-H. Yes.
Hello. Mayor, council members. I stand before you today with a heart filled with concern and voice that carries the weight of personal experience. 28 years ago, in February 1996, I arrived in the United States seeking refuge from the turmoil that had engulfed my homeland, Israel. At the time, the Middle East was witnessing a glimmer of hope. Just three years prior, Yasser Arafat, chairman of the PLO, assigned a peace agreement with Israel Prime Minister Yitzhak Rabin and U.S. President Bill Clinton. And just a year after, Arafat, Rabin, and Israeli Foreign Minister Perez were awarded the Nobel Peace Prize. But tragically, that hope was short-lived. Hamas began a ruthless terror campaign against Israel with suicide bombings of buses, restaurants, coffee shops, and bus stations. The devastation was relentless, leaving families...
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry. It's a minute for everybody. I appreciate you coming. Batshiva?
Thank you. So I'm asking you here to please protect us, the Jews. Anti-Israel became the new version of antisemitism. Rejecting the resolution will sign to the antisemitic member of this community that you reject their ways. Since October 7th, we are facing wave of antisemitic events which orchestrated by CARE, Council, and American Islamic Resolution. They intimidate us. When Jewish professor in San Jose State University lecture about peace, they chanted, "We won't be done until all the Jews are dead." The CARE members are going from one city council to another in the Bay Area trying to pass a resolution called ceasefire. These events are staged, they can chant their antisemitic slogans. We live in fear. You should reject this resolution and demonstrate to the public that you reject the antisemitism.
Thank you. Elan?
Good evening, council members. I'm Elan. I have a family in Israel. I'm resident of Gilroy. I was in Israel in October 7th. I know what it feels to be under attack. This, yes, we all want peace, but this ceasefire, immediate ceasefire resolution, is not going to bring peace. It's just going to be a way for the Hamas to rearm and start the next attack very soon. Here in Gilroy, we want to bring bridges between communities. We don't want more divisiveness. So let's focus on the peace here in our city, and I urge you, please vote no to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Vared?
I'm a Gilroy resident. I'm working the mental health professional. By hurting innocent people all loved by someone in a sadistic ways never heard before, Hamas violated any cultural standard on October 7th. They intentionally were streaming their actions to the world live, delivering a message of pride and victory as if earning a prize. By Gilroy calling for a ceasefire, terrorists will earn a huge reward. It normalizes hate crimes against humanity. It means having Hamas stay in power. The divisiveness in this room is a result of psychological terror they have been playing on this community. It is a strategy to gain sympathy from the world, to justify their actions. Look at this. It tears us apart, and this really, is this really what you want?
Thank you. Sorry, it's been a minute. Okay, Hanosh is next. And then Ruth, it says Spanish after that? Okay. Okay, so, but, so you, Hanosh is next, though. Where's Hanosh?
I only spoke.
Oh. I thought that was Vared. I mean, Elan. Okay, then, never mind. That's fine. So we're going to Reina, then. Right?
Can we start the time over?
Of course we will. Yeah. She has to get it to Spanish first. I don't know yet. I don't think so, sorry. It's because we have to do the language translation. Okay, go ahead.
Mi nombre es Reina Denise. Soy comunidad latina. Estoy aquí en representación de todos los latinos de aquí de Gilroy. Aquí en mi poder tengo firmas, 150 firmas de latinos que firmaron para que se apruebe donde estamos pidiendo, solicitando un llamado colectivo al Consejo Municipal de Gilroy para que apruebe de inmediato una resolución de alto al fuego. Gilroy estamos afectados, los ciudadanos, los latinos, lo sentimos en nuestro corazón. Nos sentimos tristes y hemos... Cada firma que está aquí, que está recolectada, es cada latino que dice, "Ya, basta. Basta de tanto sufrimiento, basta de muertes, basta de esos niños. Nosotros ahorita vamos a irnos a nuestras casas. Nosotros tenemos un plato de comida. Nosotros tenemos un techo. Ellos por qué no? Por qué no lo tienen? Eso todos merecemos tener, estar bien, tener paz. Gracias."
Okay, thank you. Okay, so back to English. Do you need time or no? So the next, the next names are Ismail Khan, Larry Shear, Anna Mendoza, Wendy Greenfield, Dora Rosen, Lucy Shantz, Tal Waters, Musa Tariq, Shala Khan. Okay, so we start with Ismail.
Hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. As an army veteran, having faced the horrors of war in Iraq on two deployments, I cannot remain silent as I witness the ongoing violence in Gaza. The scenes of destruction and suffering in Gaza echo the nightmares of war that haunt me to this day. As a veteran who has witnessed the ravages of conflict firsthand, I cannot ignore the parallels between the atrocities I've seen and the atrocities in Gaza. As veterans, we have a moral obligation to speak out against injustice and to demand accountability for atrocities being committed in Gaza in our name. Let us raise our voices and demand immediate ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Negotiations over hostage release have resumed this weekend. Israel has agreed to pause fighting, surge more aid, and release hundreds of convicted terrorists. Hamas must agree to release their Israeli hostages, 130 hostages alive. Previous ceasefires, Hamas has continued to launch rockets into Israeli cities and not kept their agreements. Ask for a ceasefire, but that will leave Hamas oppressing the people of Gaza. Gazi Hamid, senior Hamas official, said October 2023, "There will be a second, a third, a fourth attack like October 7th." Tahir Al-Nunu, Hamas Communications, New York Times, November 2023, says the goal is not to improve conditions in Gaza, but a permanent state of war with Israel.
I'm sorry, the time is up. Thank you. Anna? I'm sorry, I have to adhere to the minute. Okay?
Good evening, room members. Everybody's here in their own purpose. Some of us asking for ceasefire, some of us asking for not, right? At the end of the day, we're funding a war for them to kill each other. The bad part is that children are dying, so, you know, everybody back here is like Reina said, we go home to a nice, warm home, nice cozy bed, a plate of food on our table, but we're supporting a war that is hurting. So ceasefire or not ceasefire, it's still going to divide our city. Just keep that in mind. So think about those children. Let's stop supporting a war that is killing innocent people.
Okay, Wendy?
My name is Wendy Greenfield. I speak as a Jewish woman of conscience who is deeply pained by the loss of life in Gaza and Israel in the last four months. I urge you to pass Resolution 2, written by community members to stop the suffering in the Middle East as well as in the local community. Over 30,000 people have been killed in Gaza in the last four months and 1,100 in Israel. I heard one Rabbi say that as Jewish tradition values each human life as being an entire world, the Israeli government has already killed galaxies. Please vote for Resolution 2 to call for a ceasefire and for humanitarian aid to enter Gaza where the population is in imminent danger of starvation. We need to protect all Israeli and Palestinian hostages and all human life.
Thank you. Lucy?
Hi, council members. My brother and his family woke up on October 7th to rockets hitting their neighborhood. Unspeakable trauma, especially for my little nieces and nephew, but I thank God they are physically unharmed. Friends from the kibbutz where my cousins were born were brutally murdered. Girls and women raped and mutilated, shot in front of their families. Babies beheaded in their cribs. Terrorists left, three grandchildren being murdered. Entire families stayed up and set up on fire. Bodies paraded in the streets of Gaza, were danced on, spit on, by civilians who proudly recorded themselves doing that. That is genocide, and never again. There was a ceasefire until October 7th. 6:30 AM terrorists like Hamas that have written in their chart that Israel and Jews need to be annihilated, don't want a ceasefire. Please do not bring the ceasefire resolution in the Middle East to our city. It is and always has been a very divisive subject, and Gilroy deserves unity. Thank you.
Dora Rosen?
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. I'm Dora Rosen. I'm a member of the Reform Jewish Congregation of Temple Bethel, and the fifth generation of our Jewish family is now being raised in this area, and we have cousins in Israel. I pray they are all safe.
Thank you. I am happy to pay U.S. taxes as such to benefit all of us and make our nation more secure. Billions of our dollars have been spent to kill innocent civilians in Gaza, to destroy their neighborhoods, farms, hospitals, schools, and places of worship. Resolution number two is for ceasefire. It is also for hostage return on both sides. And this passing Resolution number two, as it is, will send a message to Representative Lofgren to stop funding killing and, to stop funding the killing and destruction. Our tax dollars should fund U.S. government support for infrastructure repairs like flood and fire control right here in Gilroy to fund our schools, our businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tal?
I'll start, where I hope we can all agree. All loss of innocent life is tragic, but this cannot blur the moral drivers of this war. Let me tell you what unconditional calls for ceasefire now signals to Israelis and Jews. Calls for ceasefire is a motion to strengthen a terrorist organization. On October 7th, we saw the most savage butchering of human life, the burning alive of families, babies, grotesque systematic rapes, torture of children in front of their parents, and murdering of parents in front of their children. Hamas doesn't just celebrate October 7th. Should Israel ceasefire, Hamas openly promises to repeat the atrocities again and again. Calling for ceasefire now unconditionally is painfully selective. It signals that you're okay with the most awful death of Jews, my family, my friends, me. I'd hope that there is no space for that kind of discriminatory position here in Gilroy. Release the hostages, dismantle Hamas, free Gaza from Hamas. Thank you.
Thank you. Musa?
Hi, I'm Musa with CARE, and we want to echo our friends in the Gilroy community in urging this council to pass the ceasefire resolution. 30,000 Palestinians in Gaza are dead, including over 12,000 children. 70% of the casualties are women and children, and thousands more presumed dead under the rubble. 85% of Gaza's population, 1.9 million people, have been displaced. Gaza is in the midst of famine with extreme starvation and dehydration taking hold under the blockade and siege by Israel, and humanitarian aid is not being allowed in. Israel is using 2,000-pound bunker bombs in areas they designated safe for civilians. These bombs are four times heavier than the largest bombs the U.S. dropped on ISIS, and they're primarily being dropped on civilians, on children, on babies, using our taxpayer dollars. A ceasefire resolution simply calls for an immediate and bilateral ceasefire, humanitarian aid to Gaza, and the release of all hostages. It's a simple, clear, and unifying message. A majority of voters think that the U.S. should call for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza and prioritize diplomacy. Please pass the resolution and stand for peace, just as this council did for Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you. Shala?
Good evening, council members. My name is Shala Khan. I want to thank you for agendizing the ceasefire resolution tonight, and I ask you, I ask that you vote yes, because this, we are fed up with this genocide, and that's exactly what this is. This isn't about antisemitism. We love our Jewish community. This is a genocide. Oxfam reports Palestinians are being killed at an average rate of 250 people per day. That's more than any other major conflict in recent years, but don't take my word for it. Amnesty International and Betsalem, which is an Israeli human rights organization, all say that Israel is committing war crimes. What's more, as a healthcare provider who works with children in our Santa Clara County and families all over Santa Clara County, I am too familiar with the long-term effects of, that trauma can have on children. So I please urge you to pass this ceasefire resolution.
Thank you. Okay, the next 10 are Howard Solovei, Natalia Michael, Rabbi Mendel Libero, Castle Weinstein, Noach Shaba Afzal, Jeff Burda, Zain Uyaya, Marbi Lee, Randa A., Louis Dremev. Okay, so going back to Howard.
Although I urge you not to pass a divisive ceasefire resolution, if you do, I ask you to ask yourselves to acknowledge the following: that a ceasefire already existed on October 7th, when Hamas attacked with 5,000 rockets, massacred 1,200, injured another 4,500, abducted 240 more; that Hamas has called for a repeat of October 7th; that Hamas has greatly increased the number of civilian deaths by storing and firing weapons from schools, mosques, and hospitals, and thus making those legitimate targets for, under international law; that Hamas holds the power to unilaterally end the suffering by releasing all hostages, surrendering its weapons, and ceding the power of governance back to the people of Gaza; that Hamas refusal to surrender in the face of Israel's predictable and overwhelming response amounts to self-genocide in the name of political martyrdom. One more thing.
No, no, no.
These signs, this is not a safe space when these signs are being waved in front of my face. I have a right to see what's going on in the council, and that's not helpful.
Please do not wave signs.
Can we start over, please?
Yes, can you please start the clock again?
Hello, my name is Natalia, and I am a proud resident of Gilroy. The event that unfolded on October 7th, when terrorists attacked Israel, leaving a trail of devastation, have left me deeply shocked and senseless. Slaughter of women, men, and children, coupled with the brutal massacre genocide and mass rapes at music festivals, have left scars that I struggle to overcome. The trauma keeps me awake at night, worrying for safety for my family, especially of my parents. In light of recent unsettling kibbutz, particularly in Christopher High School that my daughter attends, I find myself increasingly concerned about the rise of antisemitism, that its potential threat to my children's safety. I implore you not to accept any resolution that may further divide our community or have a negative impact on our amazing city. Instead, let us come together to work towards a brighter future, one built on peace, unity, and safety for residents of Gilroy.
Rabbi Mendel.
Thank you so much.
I just want to start, first of all, for thanking all of you for listening, listening now, and I know all of you have spent many, many hours leading up to this meeting, emails, I'm sure you've gotten many of those. And the simple question is, do you want to take a position that will alienate and traumatize the majority of the Jewish community? That's my simple question. What's going to bring peace in the Middle East? It's a big question. You know, the prime minister, former prime minister of Israel, Golda Meir, said that if only Israel's enemies would love their kids more than they hated the Israelis, there would be peace. So let's start that by bringing peace in Gilroy, and I don't think this is enhancing the unity of Gilroy. Let's vote for no ceasefire. Let's get our community together and focus on bringing peace in Gilroy, and that is what will have an impact in the Middle East. Thank you.
Thank you. Castle Weinstein?
My name is Yacutiel Weinstein, and I'm proudly Jewish. The effects of complacency with antisemitism currently are tragic because it encourages the type of horrible racism I have encountered myself. These actions are emboldened by communities taking a stand one way or the other, which alienates members of their communities and encourages a type of racism. Facts I want to bring up are that Hamas has embedded themselves within civilian infrastructures like the tunnels that have been confirmed by Palestinian interviews. Then they attacked Israel mercilessly and killed over 1,200 civilians and kidnapped hundreds knowing that Israel retaliated. Then their leadership stated that they would repeat until Israel is obliterated. Israel is defending themselves from another October 7th as promised by Hamas. Hamas states the obliteration of Israel is a goal in their charter. Hamas states the obliteration of Israel is a goal in their charter. Even though revisions took place, their mission hasn't changed. Please vote no.
Thank you. Noshaba?
As a resident of Gilroy and educator for 13 years, you heard directly on February 5th, families who've been traumatized with their family members being killed daily in Gaza. Thirty thousand members of different families have been killed, many of those who live right here. Jewish individuals in this room, as well as those who are scared to come today, they support a ceasefire, specifically the one Councilmember Hilton has put forth. This is not divisive. What's divisive is when we don't take action with the massive murders that are taking place before on our taxpayer dollars, when our students in the schools see that this council has remained silent for 144 days as more innocent lives have been killed. We need to take a look at the people in the room, including those with the big signs that we can't see behind. They said they're from San Jose. Look at your local community here. We've spoken to the rabbis. We agree on killings need to stop.
Thank you. Jeff Berta?
Can you start my conference? Say my name.
No, it's when I say your name.
Since the 1940s, Palestinians have systematically had their homes, land, businesses, rights, freedoms, liberties, and lives taken. Today, confined to small sections of land in their own country, living in the modern-day Warsaw ghettos. Living as second-class citizens in their own country, these people have lost everything. The continued violence inside Gaza is having a devastating impact on innocent Palestinians and Israeli hostages. The longer the indiscriminate killing continues, the more hatred that will grow between both sides. Some say passing a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza and passing will cause division within this community. I don't believe that. What causes division is killing, murdering of innocent people, intentional starvation, and collective punishment on a civilian population, exactly what is occurring in Gaza right now. Standing for peace and life should never divide more, can it? Opponents say it is not up to cities to pass proclamations on world. At farce ever, the Gilroy City Council itself voted unanimously in support of the Ukrainian proclamation only a few years ago.
Okay, thank you.
We all inhabit this planet. It is our responsibility to speak up against injustice whenever and wherever it occurs.
Zain would be the next speaker.
People have said that this resolution would create division in our community. I'd argue that division is already there, and that our opponents just want us to be quiet and comfortable with the ongoing violence and devastation. I'm sure some have said that this resolution calling for a ceasefire, that is, calling for an end to the fighting, calling for peace, makes them feel unsafe. While we, of course, empathize with those who feel unsafe, I'd argue that they should examine themselves if a call for peace makes them feel unsafe. They should explain why this historically unprecedented level and pace of violence, death, and destruction should continue so that they can feel safe. We welcome them to join us in calling for peace. We intend no harm to anyone. Please listen to your community and your own humanity, and call for an end to the violence and support the ceasefire resolution brought forth by Zach Hilton. Thank you.
Marbi Lee?
We would all like the violence that Hamas has subjected towards Palestinians, Israelis, and Jews to end, but asking a city in southern Santa Clara County to support a ceasefire when they have no say in the conflict amounts to nothing more than a propaganda war. Such empty acts only encourage more antisemitic behavior towards Jews. We have seen vandalism, protests at, and call for boycotts of Jewish and Israeli businesses in Philadelphia, San Francisco, Toronto, New York, Detroit, Los Angeles, and no doubt other cities across the country and others. We have seen college students terrorized at school because they're Jewish. To support a resolution for a ceasefire only gives fuel to this and other types of antisemitism. And for those that recall history, these boycotts and protests are eerily like the boycotts in Germany in 1933, which started a nationwide campaign against Jews in Germany prior to World War II. I'm a proud member of Congregation MF here in South County that has roots and beginnings in Gilroy almost 50 years ago. I wear my Star of David every day. Gilroy City Council made a proclamation that you stand against hate. I'm asking you to continue to stand against hate.
Rhanda A.? Hi, my name is Rhanda. I'm a longtime resident, and I urge the City Council to pass a ceasefire resolution stopping our tax dollars to fund genocide. We need humanitarian aid to get through the children. We recently had our children in our community, in our community, ask what they want for the children in Palestine, and this is what they want. I hope the kids in Palestine can get food. They are starving to death. That's from a six-year-old, from a five-year-old. I want the kids in Gaza and Palestine to have food and water. That's absolutely sad that then they're not even getting food and water. They're dying of starvation. We need that to stop. I am just a little girl, and if I were in Palestine, I would want me talking. I want them to have food. I want them to have water. I want them to have electricity. I want them to have a home. It's very sad what's going on over there. Stop the genocide. Thank you. Louis or Liut?
Hi, I stand here in front of you today with a broken heart, full of concern. I am an American Israeli who raised three kids here, and I'm worried about the future here.
Please don't pass a ceasefire resolution.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next ones will be Hamdi Abbas, Carla or Corla Kraba, Anina, Amir, Nadine, Diane M.S., Omar S., Donna M., Sharat Lean. So it starts with Hamdi.
Good evening, Mayor, and member of the council. I urge you today to approve the declaration to end the war, to end the killing, because in war and killing, violence, there is no winner. We all lose. So you need to send a message to our kids, to your community, that we are for peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla?
Hi, what is happening in Gaza is a local issue. Israel is a settler colonial state that was built on ethnically cleansing the native Palestinians, ruling over them through apartheid regime and now through genocide. October 7th is not the root cause of the issue. It's a reaction to unspeakable oppression and injustice by Israel. There is systemic censorship of content showing the atrocities in Gaza on social media from Facebook, Google, Instagram, that are headquartered right here in the Bay Area. There is plenty of evidence of doxing of students, journalists, faculty, who are speaking up against the genocide in Gaza. This is impacting students' attendance, safety, job opportunity, right here in the Bay Area. Lockheed Martin, Raytheon, Microsoft, Google.
Thank you. It's been your minute. Anina? And if you want your whole minute, you need to be closer to the microphone.
Madam Mayor, oh, sorry. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for taking the time and listening to us. Educator at Gilroy Unified School District for over 14 years, I come over to let you know that I actually urge you to pass a ceasefire for, this is not dividing the community, this is actually unifying the community. What's happening in Gaza, it's a genocide. It's not a war, it's not a conflict. Day 144 today, over close to 40,000 people bombed and killed, children, babies. So they're either killing them by bombs or starving them. They don't have access to humanitarian, you know, like food and drinks, you know, etc. Sorry, I am being emotional.
It's okay, your minute is up, though.
Okay, thank you. Please pass this ceasefire. Thank you.
Firstly, I would like to address one thing that many people said, that this is none of Gilroy's business. I think that's belittling Gilroy. Of course, it is an issue that everybody is concerned about, so even the small towns can speak on this issue. Secondly, the World Court had recently ruled about the plausibility of a genocide in Gaza. It's not a personal opinion. If the World Court is saying that, then we have to listen, and it asks for steps to prevent this genocide. In passing the ceasefire resolution, a little city like Gilroy can also contribute to the World Court opinion in bringing peace and ending the war. So please pass the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nadine, followed by Diane, if you want to get closer.
Can I stop my minute from the start?
No, you can start speaking.
Okay, it's at 51.
Because you're not speaking. No, you need to speak. This is your minute.
All right. Well, we are haunted by the images and the videos that are coming out of Gaza with more than 30,000 Palestinians killed by Israel, at least 12,000 of those being children, and our community is grieving. We are helpless. We're feeling guilty that our taxpayer money is going towards this genocide, and because I have less than 20 seconds remaining, because I couldn't even start on time. The point is, the only way to ensure the safe return of all hostages is through an immediate ceasefire. The only way to ensure the unrestricted humanitarian aid enters Gaza is through a ceasefire. And so therefore, I'm asking you to vote yes on resolution two. There is always time to do the right thing, so please join labor unions, black pastors and faith leaders, healthcare workers, tech workers, doctors without borders, Amnesty International, and the UN in calling for a ceasefire.
Diane, and then Omar.
Hi, my name is Diane, and I'm a first-generation Palestinian-American. My family comes from the West Bank town of Ramallah. I am here to urge you to vote for Councilmember Hilton's version of the ceasefire resolution. I grew up in the public schools of upstate New York. I grew up being called a terrorist. My 31-year-old daughter has been called a terrorist. This anti-Arab, anti-Islam, anti-Palestinian hate rhetoric is generational. Recently, I was part of a high school workshop helping Arab-American students deal with hate speech. The anti-Palestinian hate rhetoric is now in its third generation. You, the mayor, city council members, have the opportunity to stand against hate. As elected officials, it is your responsibility to ensure the safety of your community. Hate speech is not safe for anyone. I urge you to vote for Councilmember Hilton's resolution. Make the brave and bold statement condemning hate rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar, followed by Donna.
Hi, my name is Omar. I stand before you as a first-generation American with dozens of my relatives in Gaza. I just want to put things in perspective real quick. I've lost over 80 of my relatives. Multiple people in my community have lost dozens of relatives. People behind me who stand against a ceasefire, what statement does that make? What are you saying when you're saying you're anti-ceasefire? You're saying it's all right for more people to die on a daily basis from indiscriminate bombing funded by our tax dollars. Starvation, because hate cannot get in, for more than four months now. People suffering, enduring a living hell, and we all have a responsibility to do what's in our capacity. What's in my capacity is to speak to you. You have more power than I do. You can pass a ceasefire resolution. You can support that. That's what's in your capacity. We all have a responsibility to at least speak up and say it's not okay for innocent people to die at this scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, followed by Sharat.
My name is Donna. I am speaking here today about a brutal genocide that the whole world is witnessing. What is happening in Gaza is not just ethnic cleansing through intentional bombing of civilians, it is intentional ethnic cleansing through intentional starvation and withholding of food for Palestinians by Israel. Israel is no different to ISIS. The largest World War II ghetto housed over half a million Jews, they were forced to leave their homes with what they could carry, starved and exterminated. Does it sound familiar? Do you see the pattern? Wake Up America, a clear description of the hell in Rafah. Today, except it's 1.5 million people, a holocaust is being committed of the Palestinians, a flag that is not allowed to fly in its own country, but flies all over the world. Be human and pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
All right. If you've already spoken, please leave the front row open. I'm sorry. Oh, are you Sharat?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So the kind of hate incidents that have happened are because of war, because of conflict. And so the way to reduce that kind of hate crimes is to reduce the conflict, to take a stand against conflict, to take a stand for a ceasefire. And, you know, this is not a proportional war. This is the Fourth Geneva Convention here. All of these colored tabs here represent an Israeli violation of the Fourth Geneva Convention, and that's just for starters. So this is not proportional, and the only way to reduce the tension, to create harmony, is to call for a ceasefire, amplify the voices of your residents. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so the next speakers that I'm going to call need to come to the front row, so I would ask that you make space. Okay, Rabbi Debbie Israel, Uzak Friedman, Mayron, Arik, Robert Zapata, Aziz Bamir, Warda Ali, Zenob Ali, Deborah Chitsoet, and Joseph Robinson. So we start with Rabbi Debbie Israel.
I'm Rabbi Debbie Israel, Rabbi Emerita of Congregation MF. In October, a Christian, a Muslim, and a Jew stood before you as you declared Gilroy stands against hate. In spite of this, in spite of this praiseworthy declaration, we find xenophobia is experienced by people of all ages, especially school students. This call for a ceasefire resolution is really asking that Gilroy recognizes our collective pain. We want City Council to say that antisemitism and Islamophobia will not be accepted here, not in the schools, not in the streets, not in the marketplace. We want recognition that we're all struggling with many complex issues since October 7th, and our pain is exacerbated by not feeling heard, by not being supported in our agony. I ask you to focus on the local impact and reinforce your declaration that Gilroy stands up against hate. I do not support a ceasefire resolution.
Thank you. It's, thank you. You do not support, is that what you said? Okay, thank you. All right. Uzak is next, and then May. Is there an Uzak? Okay, then moving on to Mayron.
Please don't sign a nonbiding resolution that doesn't solve anything. Focus only on municipal issues. This international conflict requires deep understanding of the history. Don't be influenced by slogans from people who are not even local residents. These resolutions are divisive and encourage hate, conflict, fear, and suspicion. There was a ceasefire on October 6th that Hamas breached, and they recently rejected an Israeli offer for ceasefire. The moment Hamas lays down its weapons and releases the Israeli hostages, there will be ceasefire. It's that easy. There is not and never was genocide. Even the International Court of Justice doesn't support this slogan. The Gaza population grew from 80,000 to 2 million today. This is not genocide. The enemy of Gaza is not Israel, but Hamas, who is the sole ruler there since Israel left in 2005 and sees its people as human shields. Be aware of the Hamas ideology.
Thank you. Arik, followed by Robert, followed by Aziz.
So I would urge you not to sign, not to put forward a resolution. Then if you must, then please look at the language of the resolutions of the cities of Santa Cruz and Santa Clara. The problem with asking for a ceasefire, the way some of the resolutions are in Santa Clara County, is extremely one-sided, and you're asking a country against a terrorist organization, and you're asking the country to stop defending itself. So that's the reason for the problem here. Everybody wants a ceasefire. Everybody wants the killing to stop, of course. Unfortunately, there is a side here that no resolution will help to have them stop. It's a terrorist organization, right? So in that case, either you don't do, either you don't put forward the resolution, or you adopt one of the other languages which is extremely balanced. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert?
Good evening, council. So I did want to make a quick notion that you are obliged to abstain, which means you don't have to be for it or against it, because with all due respect, I've been told myself, and I have spoken here many times, keep it within the jurisdiction. And, you know, it should be common sense. I mean, no one wants to see anyone get blown up. No one wants to see anyone get murdered, regardless of what your skin color is, where you believe in. And so, yeah, I encourage, if you don't feel this or that, abstain, because in the end, you know, both sides are being played. It's a divide and conquer. Billionaires like Lockheed Martin, Raytheon, and Boeing, they're just going to keep making their bombs and their billions, so respectfully, it's uncalled for, and you may abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Aziz? Thank you. Aziz, followed by Wanda.
Good evening. I am asking you, and hoping that you will support the Hilton ceasefire resolution. A ceasefire is only the first step to help the besieged population of Gaza. The war did not start on October 7. It started 2006 on Gaza, 2008, 2012, 2014, 2020, 2021, and the current war that we're in. Food is scarce in the population, and this is on purpose. This is not the first time this happens. Just yesterday, a baby died of starvation, and people are starving. So I hope you will support the resolution for ceasefire. Thank you.
Okay, Wanda or Warda?
Warda Ali. I see community members here with pictures of Israeli hostages. The pictures of dead Palestinians, blown up, dismembered, crushed under rubble, are too graphic to share. May Israel accept offers to return all hostages and return the 8,000 that they currently hold. The world is watching. Our community is affected. We are funding this, and we absolutely have a say. I'd like to share the final words of Aaron Bushnell, who died after setting himself on fire in front of the Israeli embassy in protest. My name is Aaron Bushnell. I'm an active-duty member of the United States Air Force, and I will no longer be complicit in genocide. I'm about to engage in an extreme act of protest, but compared to what people have been experiencing in Palestine at the hands of their colonizers, it's not extreme at all. This is what our ruling class has decided will be normal: free Palestine. This is not normal. Stand on the right side of history. The only true way forward at this moment for all lives, all hostages, is through a permanent ceasefire. I urge the city of Gilroy to stand united alongside a majority of Americans in cities like Hollister, Richmond, and Oakland in calling for a permanent ceasefire.
Thank you. Zanab, followed by Deborah.
Hello, my name is Zanab Ali. I'm a proud aunt, which I'm very happy about. I have a few Palestinian friends who are also once proud aunts, but two-year-old girls just who once used to bring so much joy to every member of their family, just only identifiable by the sock they were wearing when they were blown to bits by my taxpayer dollars, which is why it is so important to me that I, as a proud resident of Gilroy, can express, hey, my city does not stand for this, because 12,000 children is just too many. And it should be as simple as that. Children should be children. They shouldn't be born into war and die into war. And I have 10 seconds left, and I just want to urge everyone here to use Google. I mean, come on, fact-check. It's not that hard. Your teacher learned some...
Okay, thank you. Okay, Deborah? Hey, please, no disruption. Deborah?
Yeah, dear mayor, council members, and community, calling for a ceasefire resolution is an attempt to ignore facts and history. It is a one-sided and a cover-up of who has violated the ceasefire on October 7 with horrific crimes. It ignores who is responsible for the suffering of the Palestinians and hides behind children and civilians while launching rockets to Israel. It overlooks who raps their future, takes their resources and money, and uses it for terror and hate. Nevertheless, this is an international issue that the national government has exclusive power over it. It does not relate to the functions of the state or the cities. The question is, what are the intentions behind these resolutions and the possible outcomes? One, to increase tension and hate among the communities and bring remote conflict to the peaceful city of Gilroy. Two, to lay the ground of influencing and distorting educations in school.
Okay, I gave you a few extra seconds because of the disruption, but it's now time.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Joseph Robinson, and then I'll get to the next group.
I want to thank you for agendizing this ceasefire, and I support it. This is why George Washington said that we shouldn't have foreign entanglements. We should avoid foreign entanglements. The majority of the population still is against the ceasefire, still is against this genocide, and has always been, and is still near supermajorities in favor of the ceasefire, and our government doesn't seem to listen to us. And it's a majority of Republicans, it's a majority of Democrats, it's a majority of people of all age groups. We are against this genocide, and we want a ceasefire. And people are talking about, well, this isn't the right forum for it. As Americans, we should choose whatever fora we please to state our disgust at this immoral, disgusting violence that we see every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Hina, Ron, Brandon, Bay, Sean, Sal Akter, Selena Diza, Ala Shamis, Galit El, Renat Shimshi, and Jenny Rim. Okay, so starting with Hina.
Good evening. As an engaged community member, and particularly as an attorney, I stand at the forefront of justice, advocating for fairness and equity in all facets of society. In times of conflict and war, the principles of fairness become even more critical as they offer the only pathway to sustainable peace and reconciliation. Ceasfires are not mere pauses in hostilities. They are lifelines, lifelines for humanity amongst the chaos of war, and especially during genocide. I call upon you as leaders of our community, as my community, to recognize the profound suffering inflicted during this genocide and to pursue avenues of resolutions grounded in empathy, compassion, and mutual respect. The stakes are too high and the cost of inaction too severe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, followed by Brandon.
Ron Kirbesh.
Okay.
Good evening again, mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I see a lot of signs behind me, ones saying, "In the genocide." And it is time to end the genocide. Israel has been suffering genocide for over 50 years with suicide bombers, blowing up buses, taxis, cafes. And they've had enough. October 8 or 7 was the last time they were going to take it without doing something major. That's what they're doing. They're trying to end the genocide. I agree with those signs. Let's end it. Let them do it. Thank you.
All right, Brandon, followed by Sean.
The issue brought to you today is an international issue. I submit to you that this issue has no business being brought to you today. You are paid and employed to address the issues of Gilroy and nothing more. Out of all the wars going on today, no other war is being brought before you. That's because it's not the council's job to judge international politics. It's also not a coincidence that the only war brought to you today is the one involving Jews. This is very much a vote to condemn Jews, not a vote to condemn Israel. Notice how none of the Palestinians here today deny the atrocities committed on October 7. Also note that not a single dollar is funding this war, not a single tax dollar is funding this war. No ceasefires have ever succeeded in bringing all of our hostages home. For those advocating for a ceasefire, what alternative solutions do you offer? How do we achieve permanent peace?
Thank you. Sean, followed by Sal.
Good evening. Ceasefire, and I want to say, US taxpayers are obligated to be involved in this issue and solve it. We have a huge responsibility as Americans for this. Israel is an apartheid state. Zionism is racism. You understand? Yeah, you do. And also...
Okay, you speak to the council?
It is an ethocracy. It is not a democracy. It is the antithesis of American democracy, which is why we're at the point we're at. If you go 100 years back and study this, McMahon-Hussein letters, Sykes-Picot, Balfour Declaration, the way the Arabs were bamboozled and Palestine held hostage for over 100 years, now we understand why we're at this point. Stop playing. Dismantle Israel just like apartheid South Africa, and we won't have these problems.
Okay, this is...
Deal with it.
Thank you. Sal, followed by Selena. If you are still talking, please leave the room. If you are talking, please leave the room. Sal?
Yes, I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution. I urge this council to view this resolution in a purely humanitarian rather than a political context. It's not about taking political sides. It's not about antisemitism. Both parties to this conflict are Semitic people. Being critical of government policies is not condemnation of an entire people. Many members of our community have been directly affected by this conflict, but we cannot kill our way to a resolution. The killings must stop. What's happening in Palestine and Israel is not subjective or interpretive. It is very clear, brought to us in high definition every night on CNN. And mind you, Belfast was not reduced to a rubble in order to eradicate the IRA.
Thank you. Selena, followed by Ala.
Good evening, city council. My name is Selena Diaz. I'm a high school, I'm a student at Gilroy High School. I may be young, but that does not mean I do not have a voice. I'm here to call for a ceasefire. I support and firmly believe enough is enough. I'm here to present my Palestinian family members, the youth, and the voice that many in this world do not have. Please, understand your privilege. You guys have the right to at least support. You guys have greater power than we do. Compared to those in Gaza that have been left with nothing but dust and the souls of their loved ones, it is not about superiority, which country is better, or which religion is right. More than 20,000 Palestinians and Israelis have died at the hands of corruptness. Please understand, we are humans. We're meant to be equal, and it is not correct for this genocide to continue to happen and continue. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ala, followed by Galit.
How many millions of Muslims live in Israel? 2 million. 2 millions. It's almost 20 population of Israel. How many Jews live in Gaza? You know the answer. Zero.
You're speaking here.
Yes. In this auditorium, we have young families with beautiful children. They have choice to move to beautiful Gilroy community and raise their family in peace. People of Kibbutz Be'eri Nahal Soaz, Festival of Nova, on October 7 didn't have a choice. They were killed, raped, kidnapped. If you see on this poster, they kidnapped the same age children as in this auditorium. So people of Gaza had choice to not raise their children in hate to Jews. Thus, communities have choice, focused in our local problem, education, seize homelessness, for example. Thank you.
Thank you. Galit, followed by Renat, and then Jenny.
Honorable Gilroy City Council, thank you for listening. I'm the parent of Israeli-American kids, and we are regular patrons of the city. Specifically, my kids love Gilroy Gardens so much that my eldest had her asked to have her have her bar mitzvah party here. Please vote no for the ceasefire resolution. Ceasefire is not sustainable peace and not the solution for hate. On the contrary. Ala mentioned Be'eri. On October 7, the massacre affected us personally. We are still in mourning, for our families dead, and the extended family is still displaced. Their house is being bombarded. We love how culturally diverse and accepting this community is, and that our kids get to grow up and experience children of other backgrounds. Bringing the war to here is divisive. The hateful speech that you just experienced makes me afraid for my Israeli children. I am afraid that my children will be identified as Israeli when they speak Hebrew.
Thank you. Renat, and then Jenny.
Good evening, mayor and council members. When you ran for office, I imagine that you were driven by the desire to serve the people of Gilroy. I commend you for your public service. Ask yourself, does this resolution serve the people of Gilroy? The answer is no. It will only sow division and discord, and it will not help the people of Gaza in any way. It also sets a precedent for special interest groups to clog this forum with debates that do not serve Gilroy. For example, what do you stand on the Uyghurs in China, the Rohingya in Myanmar, the Tigray in Ethiopia, and 100 other world conflicts. Don't play into the hands of this special interest group. Reject this divisive and manipulative resolution and get back to the business of making Gilroy a great town. Gilroy voters will remember where you stood today. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Rim. Yes, it is. The whole thing is recorded.
Dear council members, since October 7, we are frightened for our families and friends in Israel and for the safety in our community. Hamas invaded Israel and murdered, raped, burned 1,200 civilians and still holding 134 hostages in Gaza. Hamas proxies carrying terror attacks in Israel almost every day. With all that, I'm asking you to vote against the resolution. These resolutions are divisive and creating hate in our community. A city council never had opinions regarding the war in Syria, Pakistan, Yemen, South Africa, and other countries in conflict. And that's because foreign affairs are not city council objectives. We should stay united against hate in our community, create safe and inclusive environment, and work to improve our cities.
Thank you. Okay, the next speakers are Raz, Lev, Marian, Boozy, Desiree Veliscas, Louis Andrade, Olga, Ermelin, Habib M., Sharik Alabi. So start with Raz, Lev. The clock is going.
I'm shaken by the antisemitism we just saw, and I think that's why many of us are here. I'd like to ask the council to avoid this divisive resolution that serves no purpose other than to bring tension and fear to our communities. There are good reasons why other cities in our county are rejecting these resolutions and avoiding the subject. This conflict went in front of the International Court of Justice, which did not call to stop the fighting, but people here are still using the term genocide for some reason. And I want to ask if cities in the Bay Area need to litigate issues that the International Court of Justice is struggling with, that the State Department has litigated. It's not clear why these resolutions are coming. Other than to instill division and fear.
Thank you. Sorry. Next is Marian.
Hi. I'm also shaken by what I've been hearing about dismantling Israel, and this is for Israel. I know the possibility of a second Holocaust, and I think it's important everybody understand this. So I'm leaving my notes aside for a minute. I've been a resident of Santa Clara for 40 years. I've also lived in Israel for many years, and I know that there's no people that want peace more just to live in peace. They do not want to destroy another people. They want a partner in peace, and this has been the issue. There has not been a partner in peace again and again and again. A ceasefire resolution will not help. A ceasefire now will not help. A ceasefire when people agree to terms would be the best, and we all hope for peace and the end of suffering on all sides, Palestinian and Israeli. Thank you.
Thank you. Desiree, followed by Louis, and then Olga.
My name is Desiree, and where is your humanity? Be bold and brave and not just comfortable. As an indigenous native of this land, I find it insulting to disregard this current genocide happening to the indigenous people of Palestine. Israel is an illegal occupation, colonizing the land illegally. The United States... Oh, sorry. As a public citizen, I'm pleading you to please pass a ceasefire, a ceasefire for peace and support. This isn't a war. Palestine has no official military. Entire Palestinian bloodlines are being wiped out. Ceasefire is not antisemitism. Speaking of Germany, Israel has occupied this land for too long, past 75 years, killing people, kids, men, women, every day, kidnapping nurses, surgeons. Fascism is not welcome in this beautiful city we call home. We want peace. Please listen and show empathy. I've been a resident for three decades.
Thank you. Louis, followed by Olga.
We've seen numerous videos, images, and recordings, not just from mainstream media, not just from Palestinians, but Israeli occupational forces themselves committing atrocities before and after October 7, including killing their own hostages. It is an insult to weaponize and misrepresent one's faith to mask supremacist and genocidal ideals and rhetoric. Zionism is not Judaism, and making that false comparison only does harm. Some wonder how this affects us, not realizing Israeli aggression plays a major role in destabilizing countries, causing mass migration, use of our tax dollars, and testing weapons and surveillance technology. use of our tax dollars, and testing weapons and surveillance technologies that makes their way here. Collective calls for ceasefire must be made at the federal, state, and local levels. While we may have different reasons to call for ceasefire, this issue is far from divisive, and to say otherwise is cowardice.
Thank you. Olga, followed by Habib.
Thank you for listening to us today. Thousands of people that died in Gaza were alive on October 6th. People who died in Israel on October 7th died when there was ceasefire. It was one-sided ceasefire, as rockets are raining on Israel daily. That's why they have Iron Dome. United States is the biggest donor to Gaza, $5 billion since 1994 in humanitarian aid. We all want good life for people of Palestine. We do not want war. However, passing ceasefire resolution will not stop this war, will not stop these hostilities. It will only bring pain and hate and division to this community which you were elected to serve. As we just heard a few speakers ago, we're all shaken since then. You were elected to serve this community. You were elected to make this community better. You are not elected to comment on foreign affairs. Please say no.
Thank you. Habib, followed by Sharik.
I feel embarrassed. I'm here today not by choice, but by necessity. I feel embarrassed that we must discuss a resolution on why it's important to stop killing children. Behind the headlines are real lives yearning for peace. You, as our city leaders, promise safety and harmony. Supporting the ceasefire does that. It's not just about diplomacy. It's a global issue with local implications here in Gilroy. We will remember you for standing for peace when the opportunity arose, but we will also remember you for when, if you did not stand up for peace when the opportunity arose. Show up for peace. Support the resolution. Thank you.
Sharik, followed by Safiya.
Hey, thank you for your time and hearing us all out here. I ask you to support the Zach Hilton resolution for the ceasefire effort. I think all of us here, we share a common humanity. We have dignity for all people. I think that's a central tenet that each of us follows. I do believe that passing this resolution sends a signal to the federal government that the $14 billion, or each of us, $200 per person, for this unjust war, this occupation, it doesn't square with our values. So I do recommend us passing this resolution. We could use, you know, this funding here in our local community for football fields, for our wrestling programs, and schools, healthcare, and so much more. So, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I want to start by thanking you all for taking the time to hear us regarding the ceasefire effort. I am in support of Zach Hilton's version of the ceasefire resolution. On Tuesday, the Senate passed a foreign aid package that includes $14 billion towards supporting Israel's efforts in the war against Palestine, which I believe is an unjust use of our tax dollars. This money could be used locally in supporting schools, healthcare, and other programs which directly benefit our citizens across the nation. Passing this ceasefire resolution will indicate to our lawmakers that this is an unjustified war which we do not support. Seeing the suffering of the people of Palestine, seeing the suffering that the people of Palestine have endured at the hands of Israel angers me, and I hope that we can all agree that the Palestinian men, women, and children have the right to live peacefully and safely. I cannot bear to see another innocent child pass away or become an orphan.
Okay. Thank you. So there are three left. One is Spanish, though. Beth, would you like me to finish off in English and then go to Spanish, or go to Spanish?
Go to Spanish.
Okay. So Jesus, Alarcon, are you here? Okay, apparently not. So then, Ekal Fridman and Diana Yaverska. You're the last two. You could please both come forward. Diana, is that you? Why don't you go first? Go ahead.
Good evening. Me and my daughter are from Ukraine. In 2022, we ran from Russian terrorists, then they came to kill civilian people. My aunt lives in Israel, and in 2023, she must run from Hamas terrorists, then they came to kill civilian people. To stop death, to avoid war, I guess we must stop real aggressors, but not people who try to protect themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ekal.
My name is Egal. I want to start with thanking all of you for your service, especially at a night like this. 20 years back, I did my graduate studies in south of Israel from physics professor Sergey Gradyskull. He was six feet tall, full of joy, energetic, and heartfelt person. On October 7th, he was murdered together with his wife, Victoria Gradyskull. She was math professor by Hamas evil terrorists at their home in small peaceful town. They were 81 years old and were murdered due to being Jews. Many pro-Palestinian activists work under the assumption that Israel is at war with Palestinians. In reality, Israel is at war with terrorist army Hamas. Israel is taking unprecedented measures to protect Gazan civilians, just like any country must do, just like US did in the World War II. However, Hamas terrorists prevent evacuation and parades from within the civil population and use them as a human shield. Hamas must be dismantled, for sake of Palestinian people as well. Please, reject resolution. Nothing specific to the Middle East conflict should be agreed in this council. The city is too divided on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Beth, are there others that I have missed?
We do have two others. Diana Yaverska and Pasby.
Diana already went.
Okay, then we have Pasby.
Oh, I see that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. I've been a local resident for almost 25 years. I'm a proud citizen. I pay my taxes, I volunteer, and vote. My four kids are born and raised here. My older two are now in college, where they are exposed to growing antisemitism. They urged me to stay home tonight, concerned for my safety, and yet I am here. Because I find it crazy to think that students in this country don't feel safe for their parents to come to a city council meeting. This is how antisemitism works. It scares you. It makes your kids fearful. I'm therefore here to ask you to drop this request for resolution and vote a hard no. It will only increase antisemitism. I'm also here to educate. Please take notes. Israel is the only democracy in the Middle East. My time is up.
Thank you. Okay. Closing public comment. Thanking everybody who came out to speak. This entire meeting is recorded, so it doesn't matter who did their separate recordings. It is there for anybody to watch for years to come. So everyone was heard, on all sides, and now it is up to this city council. I don't know if it's necessary to have discussion, but if you want discussion, there can be discussion unless there's a... Okay, so let me go to who has asked to speak from the council. Maybe I'll just go down the line. Councilmember Tovar, I'll just go down this way. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So, excuse me, I just have some thoughts I want to share, obviously, and I wrote up a statement that I wanted to share with everybody. So, thank you all for being here tonight. I know that this is a difficult topic, and I'm deeply touched by, in hearing what everyone had to say here tonight. And I recognize it takes courage and conviction of heart to be here, and I applaud you for your bravery. In hearing from many community members with different perspectives, it's become apparent that we do have some common ground here. Talking to you has helped me realize how much our community truly does embrace the value of peace and protection of all human life. When it comes to the resolution itself, after reading through the hundreds and hundreds of emails and listening to those Gilroians who personally reached out to me, and in hearing from you here tonight, it is apparent that this resolution is a source of strife and does not create the kind of unity and support that the resolution may have had, we had hoped. And as a Gilroy City Council member, I'm in charge of the duties of supporting diversity, inclusion, and unity for all in our community, and that everybody feels supported, heard, included, respected, and valued. While we may not have an agreement on this resolution tonight, I do want to encourage you that everything you shared here tonight matters. And with that, obviously, I will make my decision when it comes to...
All right, thank you. Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, for me, not being part of council previously, when it came to the Ukraine vote, so I had no part in that. But I do want to say, from my vantage point on things, and I've been clear about this, about my position on resolutions. I'm going to read from this. It's easier that way, I don't mess up, so be patient with me. "To me, they are simply symbolic and are only meant to make a statement on an issue for that moment. A resolution is a reminder, but it does not change anything, because it can't." And I've also spent the past three weeks contemplating, praying, having discussions with those who contacted me, and observing what was being said from our South County communities of Gilroy and Morgan Hill via emails and social media posts. For me, this is a moment that we must resolve, be reflective within, and realize, and I'm kind of a skeptic, realize that we can't look to government for the comfort we seek. To me, we need to look to God, the one who is, we have removed from all public discourse and institutions. I'm asking that people who struggle with these issues look to their houses of faith, their pastors, their priests, or rabbis to receive guidance and perhaps even clarity. We have been through so much in these last four years, and God is the one who can help the most in these trying and challenging times. And remember, He has not left the public square. I also want to remind everyone that there were no issues on October 6th that would lead us to having these discussions. So do not forget that, and please remember to keep all those affected by these horrific and terrible events of October 7th in your prayers. Thank you.
Councilmember Hilton.
I'm ready to prepare for a motion, so I'll wait until the rest are given their opportunity to say something.
Councilmember Marx.
Yes, I want to thank everyone here who spoke. Our charter says that we are only supposed to deal with municipal issues. While my heart goes out for everything that's happening in the Middle East, at the end of the day, nothing changes. Hollister has a beautiful resolution. I loved when I read it. They passed in December. The war is still continuing. It has to be dealt with at a higher level, and it's the federal government. And I really, you know, if we passed a resolution, I would want to see a resolution that united all of you, and I don't see the unification tonight. I see a lot of disturbance. And you're saying, stand against hate, but I feel the hatred in this room. And we have to come to some sort of togetherness, because we are Americans, and that's what counts first above all. And we can't let something that is 7,000 miles away from us tear us apart, because at the end of the day, you are all we have, and we have to count on one another and unite together. Does that mean we turn our back on the Middle East? No. But I want you to come together. In fact, I had a conversation this morning with Zain, and we talked about the resolution. And I said, what I would like to see is a coming together of a resolution of all of you, from all of you, that works for everyone and does not divide people, because you are divided right now. And it hurts to see our community torn apart by something that maybe we never should have brought up and talked about.
Councilmember Armadere.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone who came to speak today. I want to acknowledge the pain of all those who have lost loved ones, family members, members of their community as a result of the ongoing violence in the Middle East. The purview of our role as council members is to tend to the orders of business of our community. As such, we've been asked to take a stand as representatives, as the voice of these community members, so that our fellow representatives at the state and congressional levels can hear us, so that the voice of our residents is acted upon, so that Gilroy isn't just Gilroy in this. Gilroy represents the 60,000 people who live here, our feelings, our values, and our refusal to remain complicit with the government that is spending our tax dollars on genocide. And I can't use any other language, because the textbook definition of genocide is what's happening in occupied Palestine right now. And so I cannot bear to watch more children, more families suffer. I ask that we pass the resolution, as authored by Councilmember Hilton, that includes the release of all hostages, that includes language or a permanent ceasefire, so that people can pull themselves out of the rubble, pull the remains of their loved ones out of the rubble, so that hospitals and doctors, care and aid can be delivered, so that children are safe from starvation, and that so we can take a breath and try to have some type of diplomatic conversations. This has been happening for a long time, but we have the opportunity today to say something and do something. And so I'll be voting in favor of Councilmember Hilton's resolution for a ceasefire.
Councilmember Bracco.
I'm ready to vote. And I'll put a motion on the floor.
Do I have a question?
A question? Okay.
So what we've been hearing here tonight, obviously, a lot of folks from both sides have said to kind of duplicate the resolution from the city of Santa Cruz, and in reading the resolution that the city of Gilroy for peace, it's very, almost identical.
Yes, because it's...
No, no, I know. And so what I'm sharing that for, because again, I think what we're hearing from everybody, obviously, we all want to get to peace, right?
Yes.
And for me, I think with that, you know, that's the resolution I'm going to vote for if we decide to go forward with the resolution.
So let me just clarify that, because that was, yeah, I didn't realize that when staff was going to do their, put out the staff report, that they were going to identify who submitted what. I was aware that Councilmember Hilton had submitted one, and I thought there shouldn't just be one. And so I took the one from the city of Santa Cruz and wrote it for Gilroy, not realizing it was going to be attached to me, because I, of course, was supporting that we not be hearing this item in the first place. So just to clarify that. So I think Councilmember Hilton wants to make his motion, so we'll let him do that, and then we'll see how this goes.
Thank you to the members of the public for coming out tonight. I'd like to motion to approve the community version of the resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire in Israel and Palestine, as submitted in our agenda packets on pages 172 to 173. This is the language that was brought forward by the community members who spoke in support of the ceasefire and wrote public comments back, excuse me, wrote public comments in support back on February 5th. I'm looking for a second, so that we can have an open discussion on that proposed language.
Second. Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Bracco.
I'd like to make an alternate, alternate motion.
A substitute motion? Okay.
Yeah, substitute motion, to reject any and all resolutions on this matter. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second for that?
That cannot be a suitable substitute motion, because it contradicts the first motion. So you have to really deal with the first motion unless it is amended.
There can't be a substitute motion to not have a resolution at all.
After this is voted on, right?
Okay. So then this one has to be voted on first? Okay. I didn't actually get a chance to say anything before, so I'm going to just say mine now, even though we have this motion and a second. And, you know, that is that I appreciate hearing everybody on this subject, and I certainly hope that everybody feels like they were heard. Like Councilmember Marx and Councilmember Tovar said, though, this is not about creating peace in our community at all. As we can already see, Councilmember Tovar referred to hundreds of emails. I've received thousands, and it has made it impossible for me to see any of the emails I need to see to do my, to do business as the mayor. I can't see them. Someone's had to tell me that they sent me something, so I could search by the sender name to find it. It has been well over 3,000 that I have gotten, and it's just, it's been a lot of the same thing, and it's come in rounds, and it's been very difficult, and it's made my heart race at the, both sides. It's about an equal number, and it's been, it's been a bit concerning for me, and I, I mean, it's, I'm uncomfortable, and so I can only imagine how everybody else is. This has created such discomfort at just the thought that we were going to have this on our agenda. And so I want to make sure and say that in how much I... And so I want to make sure and say that in how much I absolutely empathize with all of the pain that's going on. The issue is, the pain is on all sides. This is not a one-sided pain, and we are not a one kind of community. We are a mix of diverse people that have all different opinions and feelings. And that, I think that is clear for what we've had tonight. So I think maybe it's time to take a vote on the motion that's there, and that way we can move on to what's next. Okay?
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Armadarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
What was that?
No.
No. Thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Councilmember Tovar?
No.
And Mayor Brinkley?
No. All right, so that fails. So now, Councilmember Bracco?
Mayor!
You can make your motion. Go ahead and make the motion.
My motion will be to reject... My motion is to reject any and all...
For no resolution?
...that we have, resolutions we have on this matter.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for no resolution at all? Let's just go ahead and vote.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I ask, so if, for example, the resolution of peace, that would only, I can only bring that forward if this doesn't pass, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Because the motion is for no resolution at all.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armadarez?
Hello?
Um, no.
Okay.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Brinkley?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming. We will move on. Okay, do you want to take a... No, no, okay.
I need a break.
Okay, so let's make sure the room is cleared as quickly as possible. I don't want to take a recess.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Okay, council, we'll just sit here for a couple of minutes. People might need help being ushered out. Okay, everyone that is in council chambers, would you please exit council chambers? We are still in a meeting.
Could we please ask you to exit? We still have to continue the meeting, please.
Thank you. Thank you for serving.
Now go celebrate your birthday again.
Nice to see you. You're a new girl. Well, good to see you. Congratulations on your just-achievable.
Thought they were all here for you, Harjo.
I know, I thought it was a finance show today.
We get no love, we get no freighters, we get nothing.
Warm in here, hopefully it'll get cooler.
Okay, we're back into Agenda Item 11.3. Receive fiscal year 2023/2024 mid-year budget report and adopt a budget amendment resolution. Harjo, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the committee. Harjo Songa, I'll be presenting the item before you. A little background, the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget was adopted back in June of 2023. In December of 2023, we came back and presented the first quarterly financial budget report and a general fund update forecast to you in December. And we are here in February. We're presenting the fiscal year 24 mid-year budget report as well as a updated general fund forecast. The financial data and the discussion regarding the actual quarterly report is included in the staff report of the agenda packet. So again, very similar to my last quarterly report, we'll keep the presentation tonight to provide an update on the general fund forecast and any kind of recommendations that are coming out. But I'm happy to answer any questions if the council has any on the actual financial results for the first two quarters. With that, I'll jump right in. The council, again, last received the general fund forecast update in December of '23 as part of the first quarterly financial report. Since then, we have gotten a few updates which are noted on this slide. The first one is the sales tax. We previously communicated with council that the sales tax is projected to come under budget by about $900,000. Since December, we have received additional quarterly sales tax report, and we're noting an additional $200,000 decline, primarily in the county pool, which is online sales is seeing a decline. So that brings our current fiscal year total to 1.1 million under budget. The good thing is, this is, this additional decline is not carried forward. It is with respect to just in the current fiscal year. The second item I want to highlight is the property tax. So there's two notable updates on the property tax front. One is the development of the real property tax assessment rule with the county assessor's office for the next fiscal year. The annual growth in the real property tax for the next fiscal year countywide is trending lower. The good news is, Gilroy is trending higher in comparison to the countywide average. And then the slower growth is primarily due to fewer home sales occurring, which generally triggers the reassessment of properties to the higher property values. So the fiscal year '25 assessment is primarily, at this point, consists of the Prop 13 CPI adjustment, which is a 2% annual inflator, with some new construction and some home sales anticipated. On that front, the county assessor at the last meeting did share that commercial property assessment appeals are expected to go up. So commercial properties, shopping malls, plazas are experiencing higher vacancies. As such, the values of these commercial properties are expected to decline. With that, they are anticipating the property owners will likely expect property adjustments to the assessed values, which would lower the assessments temporarily until those properties are either converted for alternative use or they are occupied with other uses. On that front, again, the impact of any kind of decline in the commercial property tax or commercial properties is likely to impact larger cities to the north, which have a larger share of their property tax revenues that comes from these types. So cities like, obviously, San Jose, Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, they have a lot of office space. That's currently sitting vacant. For Gilroy at this time, it's not a significant concern since majority of our assessment value comes from residential properties, approximately 80%, and then 10% comes from commercial. So we are tracking this, and if there are going to be any significant impacts, we will come before you and recommend if an adjustment is warranted. The other update, aside from the assessment rule, is update on the access ERAF. We previously communicated with you that the California School Boards Association legal matter was resolved. However, in January 2024, Governor has put out his proposed budget for fiscal year '25, and it includes a proposal to make legislative change to allow charter schools to receive an allocation from the ERAF fund. So the impact of that has been included in the updated forecast. The second component of the ERAF was, we previously shared with you, that the state comptroller's office is also reviewing one of the five Bay Area counties that generate access ERAF, specifically Marin County. They have issued an audit finding on their calculation on the access ERAF, results of which will particularly, again, impact those five primary Bay Area counties that have this access ERAF. So how that turns out is yet to be noted. The good positive thing that, worse thing is, we're seeing our county actually proactively take action. So our county has actually filed a lawsuit against the SCO on this matter in December, as they have litigated this in the past as well. So at this time, we have included a adjustment for, again, the charter allocation as well as potentially revision to the ERAF calculation pending from the state comptroller's office. All in all, total about 30% of our annual ERAF is basically up on deck, if you will, you know, to be not received or reduced, if you will. So that's, that's the ERAF update. Now, as I mentioned, the commercial property tax impact, potentially because the way access ERAF gets calculated countywide, if there is a countywide change material to the commercial property tax revenue, it could flow into the access ERAF base as well. So whereas we're receiving the $1.8 million, that base could further get adjusted. That is yet to be known, so as soon as we have a next update, we'll be able to share that with you. Now, a bit of good news is, we're able to also generate some additional investment income. So we have made an adjustment to the forecast. Because of the rapid rise in the interest rate environment, the city's idle cash has been invested and is generating additional yields. So we're anticipating the general fund is going to generate additional, about $400,000, totaling over $1 million in investment income. So we have also adjusted our subsequent years assumptions based on that as well. On this slide is the chart. Again, overall, the adjustments that I showed you on the prior slide, the sales tax, the property tax, as well as the investment income, the overall adjustment resulted in a minor change in both of the budget years of $200,000 in the current fiscal year and about $100,000 in the next fiscal year. As previously communicated, in December, the fund is expected to maintain the minimum required fund balance for the next several years through fiscal year '27. And then, obviously, as displayed on the screen there, we're expected to dip below in the latter two years of the forecast. So, which essentially means over the next budget development cycle, we have some work to do. So we'll be, make some adjustments to ensure that the fund remains structurally balanced. The other item included in the packet is a resolution for fiscal year '24 budget adjustment. The city has received from the state of California some dollars to abate the opioid epidemic as part of the national opioid settlements with pharmaceutical companies. So this is an allocation that's coming out of the settlements that are happening at the national level. The states are receiving an allocation, and the state is further allocating dollars to counties and cities. The city has received approximately $41,000 in these funds, and they are, there's a criteria on how to expend those dollars primarily on education and prevention efforts and such. So we're recommending that council appropriate the $41,000 that we have received for education, prevention, and purchase of the Narcs. With that, the recommendation before you tonight is to receive the report and adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year '24 appropriations in the opioid settlement fund. That concludes my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Harjo. Mr. Hilton, if you would like to go first, I have some questions too, but go right ahead.
Thank you. You might not know the answer to this, but you briefly talked about it. So there's commercial properties that would be allowed to appeal, basically, and saying, my property is deteriorating or whatever, get that reduction until it comes back up. When, when properties like we've, we've, like, new hotels that are coming in, the industrial areas, like, I mean, we've approved a lot of square footage of, I would imagine that 80 to 20 is going to shift pretty heavily. Are they, are those new properties allowed to do the same suit? And say, well, I know our building is brand new, and the property value is obviously going to be... Do you understand what I'm asking? Are they allowed to ask for that too, temporary?
It depends on what stage of the development they're at. If they are fully developed and occupancy permits have been issued, and they're unable to secure tenants, they possibly could submit. But if it's still under construction, or it hasn't even, you know, it's still going through the building process, then incrementally, as we report the construction values to the county, the county takes those construction values and assesses the levies, if you will. So they're not, they're incrementally capturing the value that's being developed.
Okay, so like 10th and Chesmith is being developed with the hotel and all that stuff. Like, that's not going to get devalued tax-wise?
I wouldn't expect, yeah.
Or it just, I mean, it is brand new, okay?
Right, I mean, if anything, it would help our case and add added new construction value.
To it.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. Harjo, thank you for your, for the update. I do have five questions.
Okay, all right.
So I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this, answer them, but I'm kind of trying to peel the onion a little bit here, right? So again, looking at the targeted budget of 1.1 million under, you know, for fiscal 2024, which is very concerning to all of us, right? But in looking at, knowing that, you know, my question is, obviously, what if any proactive measures is the city taking to address declining sales tax revenues?
Boy, I'm not sure if I'm able to answer that question. Yeah, I would have to consult with our economic development team to see, you know, I'm not aware of...
Okay, well, let me try. Because again, for example, business attraction, consumer attraction, business retention, I mean, those all contribute, right? So I know you may not be able to answer, but I think we have to have that discussion, right? Because this report, great, but what are our next steps? And I think, again, we need to be a proactive city, right? Question number two...
Councilmember? It, I'm just asking. If I could ask my question, it might lead into that one, and then you can go on with two through five. Okay, because my question, Harjo, had to do with the expenditures. I think this is going to be where your answer is. The expenditures that are on page 200 of our packet, the actual expenditures from the general fund, I'm sorry, not actual, the budgeted, I mean, the amended budget, that the numbers that are our bible, so to speak.
Yes.
Okay? Are 74.1 million is what's there. But in the forecast, which you have on page 196, you only show expenditures of 65.6. And, correct me if I'm wrong, that's because you're aware that there are staff positions that are not? Or what is the reason for that difference?
There, I think if you're looking at the page 196, the way we display our expenditure is operating expenses, so the 65.6, you would also, you would also have to add the one-time use of fund balances, which are also expenditures. So the 8.6 million, that's on the bottom. So that would take you to the 74 that you see on page 200.
Oh.
Yeah.
So that, oh, okay.
So if you recall, when we adopted the budget, we did some one-time use of fund balances.
Okay, so then to get at Councilmember Tovar's question, aren't there, didn't I read in here that you're anticipating general fund expenditures? I mean, I don't like the word savings because it sounds like a good thing. And when we actually have savings, it's unfortunately because we couldn't fill positions that we badly need. So the answer to Councilmember, Councilmember Tovar's question is, we end up with reduced revenue, we end up unable to fill positions that we had hoped to fill. Is, am I saying that correctly or not?
I would look at, I think, the way I understood Councilmember Tovar's question is strictly related to enhancing revenues or maintaining or... related to enhancing revenues or maintaining or developing sales talks.
What are we doing about the fact that we're going to have less less revenues?
Right. From an economic development is how I understood this question.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
No, that's, yeah, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I thought the answer is, I don't know, Jimmy, if you want to add any comment to this, but.
The only thing I would add is that the lowering of sales tax is not a function of business development, it's a function of consumer spending.
Spending.
As you can see what's going on in the Bay Area, there are jobs being cut, so they tend to spend less money and the erosion of local sales tax in general has been going on for quite some time. So we don't have, I mean, we, if you can see throughout town, there are numerous retail sites that are being built, especially Tenth and Chestnut, which has another hotel, and that will help, but it won't help stop some of the degradation of local sales tax.
Okay, if I may, thank you.
Yeah, no, continue with your question.
Again, and I appreciate that answer and if I'm off here, please let me know, but I think what the city manager said, obviously, for me, it's like, again, talking about what are we doing to address this, right? I understand the differences, but, you know, we talked about, you know, folks spending money here. What are we doing for to attract new customers to Gilroy who will spend tax dollars here, right? Those are the questions we should be asking is, what are we doing to get folks here? Because I think everyone on this council is sick and tired of hearing, Morgan Hill, Morgan Hill. We need to start creating a community that people want to shop here. And again, I'm not, you know, it's not toward you, it's just in general, right? And then again, obviously.
The council member, that's not his job. He's the, you know, he's doing.
Like I said, I know it's not his job, I just need to say that we have to have this discussion.
You're killing the messenger.
No, no, no. But it's not, because you know why? It's it's everyone's job in the city to think about this, right?
True, but he's giving a report.
Can I finish, Carol, please?
No. Or hurry.
Carol, please. And then again, what are we doing to support promote our local business, sales tax generators like the auto mall, the outlets? Again, I know it's not your job, but we have to start asking those questions because next year, if we're in the same situation, it gets uglier and uglier, right? And if we're not having these discussions as a council, then where's it where's it going to lead? I understand, Carol, that it's not his job, but I think we as a council, we have the obligation to talk about that.
I try, Carol.
Again, it's not.
Do you still, councilmember, do you have another question?
No, I'll.
Was that three, four, or five? Which one was that?
Okay.
No, that was three.
He doesn't, oh, I thought you just said you don't have any more questions.
Well, again, you know, again.
It just seemed like it.
There you go. But again, we can't, we can't avoid these questions, right?
Okay, I don't see anyone else. No flapping.
Harjo, I know.
Intimidating. Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? Harjo, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say, if you read my act for report, I actually did a very nice section on revitalization and how much the council has invested and that's actually one of my items that I'll be presenting tonight, but I highly encourage you to read it, I think, you know, there's a lot, a lot that we have done.
I did. Honestly, the only thing that stumped me was why seventy-one point seventy-four point one expenditures versus sixty-five. And I thought I did read that you were expecting savings, but that the savings were because of staffing.
No, I mean, that typically is the case annually, yeah, but we're at this point, we're not anticipating, we won't project those until we get closer to the fiscal year.
Okay.
Move for approval? You see?
Second.
Okay, okay.
Was that a real motion?
It was.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does this, however you.
It's a resolution, right.
You have to read it?
There's also a resolution.
Okay, so this is a this is a motion to receive the mid-year budget report and adopt a resolution of the city council, the city Gilroy, amending the appropriations for fiscal year twenty-four in Fund two ninety-three.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Brockham?
Yes.
Councilmember Armigeras?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, before we go to eleven point four, would council like a five-minute recess? Okay, so we'll take a five-minute recess to. Okay, it's nine o'clock, we are reconvening, we are on agenda item eleven point four, which is fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, departmental work plan updates. Jimmy is going to give this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. I'm going to introduce this and do all of the departments except for community development, which we'll do last. That's the one department we need to talk to council about the workload and council priorities, but the other ones are just updates, so I'll kind of blow through that pretty fast. And if you have some questions or whatever, you know, please stop me and we can, we can talk about where we're at on some of these work plan items. June fifth, twenty twenty-three, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget and departmental work plans were adopted by council and the departmental work plans provide a listing of the various projects that departments are to work on over the two-year period. So we have about sixty-three items as of June fifth of twenty twenty-three on the work plan. And some of those are carried over from previous years and some of them are completely new. A reminder of how we went through that strategic planning process, we talked about mandated items that we have to do by law, the core items, maybe they're not by law, but we should be doing, and then discretionary are, they're surely good for the public, but they don't meet that other threshold of core mandated, and that helps us kind of prioritize some of our work at times as well. So as you can see how it breaks down into the department, and I'm going to give you just a quick highlight of community development is although it's not a very large department has the has a very large amount of department work plan items, and we have committees and groups that are coming up with ideas and those fall a lot of times on the the community development department. And then my department's second, and there's hardly anybody there. Okay? As you can see here, the circle, we have about fourteen of the sixty-three completed, which is is probably on pace because we're about quarter of the way through the two-year budget cycle, so we're, we're getting some stuff done. You'll see a lot over the next few months, but, you know, most of them are either pending, which is twenty-seven percent, means we just haven't started them yet. One is Civic Center Master Plan, which is a big work plan item for us, we haven't started that yet, we'll, we'll start that here in the next few months. And then underway is about half of those are things we're in progress and then we've completed about, like I said, twenty-two percent. And we canceled three or two, and you'll see those on the the work plan and we'll tell you why we canceled them. Okay, I'm not going to go through all these lists, these are the reminders of the the work plan items administration, which is my quasi department, and you could see everything here. So I'm not going to list council wants me to, but. Okay, so there's that whole list for administration and this is also in your packet. And then administrative services, that, you know, H R, fleet facilities, all those things that we had had approved. And then finance, I T, a lot of that is showing up in a lot of this work that you've seen, oh, sorry, has shown up in the annual financial report, so it's not something that most of most people would recognize or or know that it was completed, but those are some of the mandated things that we have to do. And then utility billing and and T O T and things like that, so those are, those are all the work plan items. And then ironically, it feels like we just got the new enterprise resource planning system, but it actually needed an update, and so that's a pretty big project for I T, but they've gotten that completed and a lot of our cybersecurity work as well. And so again, these are just repetitive of what's on the list. Fire, Santa Teresa Fire Station, funding for Chestnut and Lasana Station retrofit plans and and over there app-ing and R M S incident data reporting. These are various stages. Police. I'm not going to go through those. Public Works, Storm Rain, S B thirteen eighty-three, most of these are, especially at the top, are mandates. And then downtown beautification is one that's becoming from the ad hoc committee as well, so that's on the work plan as well. Okay, so we to date have thirteen council-initiated agenda items that have been asked added this fiscal year just previously, so that's again, it's show you that a lot of things jump up and a lot of things that are, and that's common, I mean, we expect that, but where we run into some issues as staff, it's like, okay, what is the biggest priority here? Because in some of these, they're, they're pretty heavy lifts and and one I could tell you, like Jedi Policy Consultant, as you've seen, is training is out, it's taken us about a year to get through that process. It's been organizational effort, a lot of work, but a lot of good work, and it 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 does take time. And that was something that council initiated for us to do and we're happy to do it. Other ones, some of those on there are much smaller and some of them, like the vacancy ordinance is probably a pretty heavy lift due to implications on ballot or things like that, so. But this is additional items that the council's added. Okay, I'm going to turn it over at this time to Sharon, who can talk to you about community development and the, like we said, one of the smallest departments, but with a lot of things and of most of the issues that council has addressed, especially the downtown, have some way, shape or form an affiliation with community development, code enforcement, parklet programs, all those items added to the community development workload. And so I want to have Sharon kind of walk you through this and answer the questions you have and then, yeah.
I just want, before you go to Sharon, what we have in our packet is sixteen items and that's twenty. What's the difference?
The four are the ones from the ad hoc committee.
No, those are in our packet too, and it's still a total of sixteen. Did you check? Okay, well, maybe I'll wait for Sharon's report. I just wanted to know why that's different.
Number two has been added, it looks like implement A B twenty-two, three, four, building for that question.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a complete list, so the first fourteen were adopted as part of the budget cycle and the last six were the ones that were council-initiated agenda items. So the sixteen you see in the general report removes the four that have been completed. So I can go through that in more detail.
Oh, this one includes four that have been completed. That's what you're saying. Got it. Sorry, thank you.
Transition there.
Okay.
Yes, so as I explained, this is the, you know, the first fourteen were adopted part of the budget cycle and then the last six were part of the thirteen that Jimmy showed. And I can briefly, and you have the entire matrix in your agenda packet, but just briefly touch on the ones we've been able to complete. That's number two, implementing state laws, A B twenty-two, thirty-four for building permits, create a website with checklist and documents, sample permits, applications for various housing development projects. And then number three, we just took the A D U ordinance to council that was adopted in December and we submitted to H C D, so that was completed. And then number five, even though it was one item, you see, you know, various state laws listed there, so each one is actually a different initiative. So staff analyzed each state law, created all the documents necessary to go with it, such as handouts, checklist, and the approval process and create a website for each of those. And the, oh, actually, it's not the last, but S B three seventy-nine, that had to do with the implementation of an online permitting, streamlining platform for solar P V permits. And after we went live with our permitting system in June last year, in the fall, we also worked on integration of that with our permitting system. So basically, those were the ones we completed. And then jump down to number sixteen, that's the sidewalk vending ordinance, through all the research and presentation of the draft ordinance to the council last year, council adopted ordinance, and also the permit fees. And the last several months, staff has been working on the implementation through creating the website, you know, lots of handouts, in-person outreach in the field with the businesses and the vendors, and also conducting workshops together with Central County Department of Environmental Health. And it's continuing, you know, it's a weekly process. Every weekend, we have, you know, a team of two minimum to go out and patrol downtown streets. So as you heard from Jimmy, we've received, our department has received a significant portion of the council-initiated agenda items, so six out of the thirteen, which is forty-six percent. And the understanding regarding these council-initiated items is that whenever an item is added, it is to be prioritized and for as many additional items are added to the workload, an equivalent workload would be removed from the work plan to reflect the current capacity. So staff's here tonight to ask council to prioritize, you know, the recent items that got added against the other items. And the method of prioritization is, as Jimmy described, is based on mandated core or discretionary. So before I move on to the next slide, this is where in the agenda report, you see the sixteen items, if you're looking at that. So it removes the four that I just talked about earlier. And it renumbers them, but it's, you know, we're just kind of trying to show the total number of items. And if you look at that list, for example, number one, climate action plan, that has a print showing mandated. And then from two through seven is core. That's not necessarily a ranking, but just it's grouping the core items together. So doesn't mean, you know, two is above seven anyway, because we're trying to make some effort on all of them.
Sharon?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
If Sharon's.
Sure.
Yeah, so kind of looking at this list here, obviously, you know, I'm just looking at, for example, you know, some of my concerns are some of the items that are labeled discretionary, right? To me, that tells me that it's not as important, right? And it concerns me, but item, the beautification and decorative lighting improvements, and here it's listed as completed, I understand that there's, if there's addition lights or whatever it may be, that that would come from the from the ad hoc committee, right? My question is, can you tell me why, you know, the lights look beautiful downtown, but why was Fifth Street excluded from the lighting?
I think I'll refer that back to, because I think that element is under administration, I believe.
I'm looking here.
I'm sorry, I wouldn't be able to tell you why, I could get back to you, but I don't I don't know.
Well, yeah, no, and again, if, yeah, if that was, if it wasn't done on purpose, I would ask that we, I mean, treat that street like we do the other streets, because I was there and I noticed that there's no lighting down there, so. Okay.
Go ahead and continue with your report, Sharon.
All right, sounds good. All right, so back to this slide. So our department has several key positions vacant and overall, in the department, we have actually eight vacancies and with some of the key positions that will be responsible for the higher level of work. The majority of the council-initiated items, as well as the remaining original work plan items adopted as part of the budget cycle, do require this higher level of work because they're mostly policies or ordinances, you know, and program development type of work. And alongside with human resources, we've been all working diligently to recruit and fill these positions. And I want to talk a little bit about the development activities and code enforcement activities that kind of represent the day-to-day operation of our department. During this past year, just we want to know that development activities and service demands, we've definitely seen an increase. And if you look at the revenue that we have received this year in the first seven months of the year compared to last fiscal or the first seven months, it has increased from one point seven eight million to two point six three million. And this revenue, it comes from application fees and permit fees, and that represents the increasing volume of development projects and also the scale of the projects. Another area we've definitely noticed increase too is our permit counters for planning counter and building counter. Comparing calendar year twenty twenty-three to calendar year twenty twenty-two, we've noticed more number of customers and also an increased average length of service time. And that translates to an increase of about one thousand twenty-four hours of counter service time between the two calendar years. And this increase also indicate the rising volume of development activities and inquiries and also the complexity, complexity of those development applications and inquiries. In addition, we also have been seeing code enforcement activities really surging this past year. You can see the the new cases have increased from nine hundred forty-four to one thousand six hundred fifty-eight. That's a seventy-six percent increase. So all of these kind of represent the day-to-day operations of our department and for some types of applications too, we have stay mandated processing timelines and turnaround timelines that we have to meet. So sometimes staff will have to work after hours in order to meet those timelines. So based on staff's current assessment of the remaining sixteen month of the budget cycle and the current vacancies and the service demand level, staff estimating that we have enough capacity to make some efforts on those twelve items remaining from the original adopted work plan. And this means the last four will not be worked on until, you know, sometime after the twelve have been completed. And I kind of want to talk about this a little bit more detail too. Sorry. With the, let me see if I can find those. Yeah, so here. For example, the climate action plan will take approximately two years. And the VMT TDM policy, we have applied for a state Caltrans grant together with climate action plan. So that will also, we're looking at, you know, more than a year of effort. And then Ethan Alexander partnering with the county to develop that site, that is definitely a multi-year effort. But, you know, we'll continue to make efforts on that. We just want to make sure, you know, that is a really important item that I believe for the council and for the city as well. There are several items too that have been carried over from the prior budget cycle. For example, the zoning co-update, inclusion in housing policy, VMT TDM, and the climate action plan as well. So here, I'm going to hand it back to Jimmy.
Thank you, Sharon. So at this, if you go back to the, the previous slide, Sharon, this is what we're recommending, of course, but we know, we've heard different things from council about what are your priorities and what you want to do. So we're, we're asking you now for feedback and direction about what, what the list of those priorities is, is your desire.
Okay. Okay, so I see council member Marks has been waiting to speak, so why don't you go first, council member? And if there's anything you want to address specifically to what Jimmy just asked?
Yes. I want the council to consider reprioritizing some of these. For example, the safe parking policy was started in 2019, and it's never, five years later, we still don't have it. I hate to see some of, you know, the plywood storefront vacancy ordinance wait for this policy to come into play. I'd like to see that moved down. The revised mobile vending ordinance, which is our food trucks and our drive-throughs near residential areas, I think both of those could be really simplified without a big staff report. But basically, you know, for the food trucks, I think a discussion amongst the council members to hear how they feel, how they would like to suggest to handle it, might be very useful to community development. It would speed the process up, same through the drive-throughs near residential areas. The smoking prohibition ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we vote on that and pass it? So isn't that completed?
Yeah, so this is the implementation of the ordinance. So to give you, get the matrix out. Staff from several departments collaborated to create a web page with forms and handouts and signage template and utility insert. And since then, our code enforcement team has been implementing the ordinance through identifying, notifying, and working with 552 properties that are subject to the ordinance. As of February 8th this year, 278, 79 properties have met the ordinance requirements, and 273 properties have yet to comply. So we continue to work with these properties.
Right, but isn't it just code enforcement that works with it? I mean, that doesn't take away from any of the planners, correct?
For this phase, correct. But then, you know, some of the other phases, like for example, at the beginning, when we were developing all those forms and all, it's multiple staff members from the department that all work together.
Right, but that's already completed, correct?
That portion, correct.
Okay, so that basically could be taken off the list and moved over to code enforcement, right? I mean, that's...
Correct.
Well, it is, but, you know, they're not working on a daily basis when they could be attending to some of these other items. The sidewalk vending ordinance is done, but it needs to be reviewed, again, because of the issues that's been happening every weekend. But that shouldn't be taking any time away from community development. That's more, again, under code enforcement. What I would like to see in this place, right in, and then going down to the noise ordinance, the downtown committee worked on the noise ordinance as information to give to community development. So I understand community development is going to develop a noise ordinance for downtown, but it doesn't have to be, you know, per se, one of the top items that was strictly informational, you know, for you to use. What I would like to see moved up to eight, nine, and 10 would be the plywood storefront ordinance, the vacancy ordinance, parklet we're going to be working on in March to give you information on that. So that would be, that could be number 10. But this plays right into what council member Tovar was saying, you know, what are we doing for economic development? This is one part of economic development, to get our downtown stimulated, get the plywood off so we're attractive to businesses, get those empty buildings finally filled after 10 to 15 years. I mean, I understand a year or two, but I don't understand anything longer than five years. So I'd like a council discussion on seeing if they would agree moving vacancy, plywood, and parklet up to eight, nine, and 10.
Can I just clarify what you're saying? Okay, I'm going to use numbers instead of the words, because I just think it's easier. All of this is important, no, I don't think you're suggesting that anything get removed and bad. You're just saying in terms of the priority that's here, you would move eight, nine, and 10, not 11. Eight, nine, and 10?
Right, 11 could stay where it is if you want. Or just shift everything.
I'm asking what you're suggesting.
Okay, all right, so maybe what I'm suggesting is plywood goes to number eight, vacancy goes to number nine, parklet 10, and then safe parking 11, mobile vending 12, drive-throughs 13, smoking...
I can't follow that.
I can't either. I'm sorry, I, I, would it be correct, would it be correct to say, Carol? That you would like eight, nine, 10, and 11 to come after 15 and before 16?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, that's easier for people to follow.
Okay. Well, I guess that's how some minds work. Okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay, so she, she's...
Say it again?
So she, that eight, nine, 10, and 11 be moved to between 15 and, after 15 and before 16?
Yeah, so all those numbers move up.
Eight, nine, 10, and 11?
Yes.
Get moved to after 15?
Correct.
And before 16?
Correct.
So of course, 12 then becomes eight.
Yes, that's what I said.
Yes.
I know, but...
Did I misread your...
Yes, that's what I said.
Okay, so that's what she's suggesting. So is there discussion on that?
Yeah.
Okay, council member Armendaris.
Thank you. In terms of safe parking, like the rest I'm fine with, but in terms of safe parking, I think that because we continue to have more and more folks having to stay on the streets and stay in their vehicles, we need, we need a policy that, we need to craft something, right? We can't just having folks continue to be in limbo and our law enforcement and code enforcement be asked to enforce something that we, we haven't finalized. And so I think it's really important, because it's about the safety of our residents and folks in our community, right? Having somewhere safe to, to park and live. So I, I wouldn't like to see that be any lower than it already is.
See, I agree with you, but I would hate to see the others held up because of it, since it's taken five years and we haven't found land, we haven't found agencies to run it. And I wouldn't want to see those other items discarded until that got completed. I don't mind us working in conjunction with safe parking with those other items, but...
So we don't have the language of a policy yet, is the thing.
I think we do, no, we do.
Do we?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, we don't. We, we allocated a smitten of money to, to a program, but we never wrote a policy.
It's because we did the RFP and we didn't get anybody.
Right, yeah, it's a very low amount of money. Okay.
May I provide some clarification regarding the four items mentioned by council member Marks?
The four being eight, nine, 10, and 11?
Eight, nine, yes.
Okay.
Regarding number nine, that work item transitioned to economic development. And after adoption of the downtown parking management plan, you know, the plan was to research that and bring that back in to council in mid-2024. And then for number 10, the drive-through near residential areas, that will be done as part of the comprehensive zoning code update.
So would it be safe to say that you could put that in with updating zoning code then? Just combine those two, so we can not have to remove one less?
Oh, yeah, right.
We're not removing anything, we're just reordering.
Correct.
I'm, I'm suggesting removing it.
But if we move it, then we move it to another...
Combine it, so we have, we have less to...
I mean, we can put the two, yeah, put the two together.
That would be good.
Yeah, because it is going to be an, an update in the zoning code anyways.
Yes, with more special focus on that aspect.
So there's, there's more room for yours to come up?
Yep. And then the smoking prohibition ordinance, we talked about that earlier, that there's still, you know, more than 200 properties that staff will continue to follow up on. And the interaction with those, you know, continues in the...
Right, but that doesn't affect the people who are working in the planning department other than code enforcement, correct?
In a way, yes, but also, if you look at the department as a whole, you know, like what I talked about, because we have eight vacancies in, vacancies in the department. So a lot of times now, we have to help each other out. And, you know, some of the managers too, we're all doing, you know, a much larger range of duties. That's typically, that might be done by, you know, other line staff, but we've all been just working after hours a lot more to cover all of the development activities that you saw, you know, that I talked about, that's been increasing. And same thing with the enforcement activities too, you know, you saw the numbers that's really been surging this past year. So, you know, in addition to this work, then that means there are some other things that will be, you know, delayed and much longer turnaround times.
I'd like to advocate if we could keep smoking prohibition ordinance implementation on there, like she said, we have about halfway to go through. We're going to get some funding through the county to, can you help us with that? I mean, those are our residents that are living in these situations, and they've testified to it, that, and I'm pretty sure that some of these properties have had a good positive turnaround. They finally realized, no, I can't, I'm not allowed to smoke in my unit. I don't, I, I'd like to see us still keep that health aspect up there for our residents that we're giving them a voice, you know, in their living situation.
But even if we moved it to the bottom, that doesn't mean code enforcement is going to stop doing it. They will still continue with their job.
Maybe not. I wouldn't, if I was staff, I would say that that's, that's pending workload capacity. I'm not working on that anymore.
Well, we could keep it, well, look, it's discretionary right now.
No, but it's not an active work plan item. I'd like to keep that, if we could, an active work plan item. And in return, I was, that's what I was trying to say, we could move number 10 into number two to at least provide some space for that one health aspect.
See, I see these all as active, all 16, that are very important.
But they're not. We're splitting them up.
Economic development's not important?
No.
Okay, so we need to rein this in. So is there, is this something that requires a motion? Is this not just a give direction? Or is it?
What I, I think what would help us is give us the direction, and we'll come back and, and submit the timelines for these projects, because the thing to remember that Sharon said was that was it the top seven were probably going to be the only ones we're even going to get completed this year.
Correct, yeah. We've initiated some efforts on...
I'm sorry, Sharon. Yeah, let Sharon speak.
Okay. Okay. So of the 12 that you see here, that's from the original adopted budget, the ones that haven't been completed yet, we've initiated efforts on many of them. Some we estimate will be able to, you know, initiate effort in this next fiscal year. That's with the assumption of development activities, you know, enforcement activities stabilizing, we fill all the positions, and there's no further staff departure or retirement. And we estimate, you know, with those assumptions, we estimate being able to complete seven of the 12. And like I mentioned earlier, you know, some of the remaining ones, those will be carried forward for future, to future years, because they are multi-year projects. And as we complete those seven, we'll be transitioning some of the staff resources to the remaining five, so that we can move those along faster, you know, and get them completed in a more timely manner, instead of keep carrying, carrying forward those items. Because some of those, I know when I, you know, came on board, they were already carried over from the prior budget cycle. So, you know, that's the plan with these 12 items, you know, we want to finish as many as we can. And the ones that might need no longer, once we have some resources, and once they're completed, that we're going to be shifting the resources to, you know, the remaining ones, so we can complete those faster.
Council member Armendaris, you have a...
What I was going to mention is that if I could see a, a timeline or with some, an estimate of how much time is needed for each of these, I know that is going to cause you more work to do that, but I think it would help me better estimate whether or not we should reorder these, right?
So that's what Jimmy is saying, we'll come back with our direction here.
That would be helpful.
So we just need to know, are we going, how, how do we want to, how do we want to direct staff to change the order of what's here now? I heard council member Marks, and I think we all understand that, council member Hilton is asking that number 11 remain above the line.
I'm also asking for eight to remain where it is, or at least above the line.
Okay, so we have one person asking for 11 to remain, one person asking for eight to remain, one person asking for eight, nine, 10, and 11 to, to go down. Yeah. So I, I appreciate that all of this is necessary, but just given the issues that we have downtown and the activity going on with the downtown committee, I personally would support moving, moving eight, nine, 10, and 11 to after 15, like council member Marks suggested, and hope that that doesn't mean that these others aren't getting done. They're, they're going to get done when they can, but at least downtown is installed.
Mayor, and I would, I would, I would agree with that, but what council member Armendaris mentioned, no, I agree with what you're saying, I would go with that. But again, it would be useful for us to have that timeline, right?
Yes.
Because then, then we can say, okay, you know what, maybe next time, this is what we need to do. Because right now, I'm looking at some of these, I'm like, how much time does that take, right? But I know it's an important project, but without us knowing, you know, it's take a week, a month, a year, I don't know.
Okay, so Jimmy, can you explain then what happens from here? If we were to do that, what, what then does council see?
So what we would do is exactly what we do during the budget process, and you actually see timelines on that. We'll come back with the revised order pending the council direction, and we'll take you through that, just like we would have done during the budget and said, this, this starts in quarter two, we'll be through, and then you can ask your questions about why does this take so long, or why it doesn't take very long, or, just that way you have a little bit more to, to work with.
And you know, one more thing I'd like to say is, at least for the public to know, the two plywood and vacancy ordinances, they're pretty much formatted as an ordinance. Community development, I don't want them to think they have to start from scratch, drawing this up. You would look at it, read it, maybe tweak it a little bit, and then send it to legal. So those two ordinances shouldn't take longer than a couple of days to really look at, because we've done the work for you.
I think the vacancy ordinance will be one of the heavy lifts in this entire list.
Right, that, that would be, but...
Yeah.
I want to pitch something to you, council member Marks. So since we're going to be moving number 10, right, the drive-through residential, that, that will be put into zoning.
The zoning, correct.
Right? Well, no, that's not zoning code. So that, that, if we remove that, and you remove eight, nine, eight, nine, and, I'm sorry, eight and nine, that gives you room to move your four up without, with, without removing the smoking prohibition?
And I'm, I don't want to remove it, because I see they're still working on it.
No, you're, that's in your, you say you want to.
Well, I mean, I do, but I don't want it off the list. That's, that's what I'm saying. And even with the revised mobile vending, we could probably, we could simplify that, that particular one in discussion without much work for community development at all to do. You know, some of these can be easily handled.
But that's a staff decision.
Yes, exactly.
We, we have a list in front of us, and I'm asking you, I'm pleading you that, that you allow the smoking prohibition to still remain in the active work plan. They're about halfway through their properties. This is for the residents that obviously can't speak up for themselves. I, so I would like to see if that can stay up there. And like I said, we, I created space for it by asking that the drive-throughs can just be combined with zoning code, so you can move your four up and it still will remain as 12.
We're only moving three up. Parklet, plywood, vacancy.
Okay, well, there you go.
I don't see the parklets, the plywood vacancy noise ordinance, I don't see those as having urgency, like there's no, they're important. I'm not saying they're not important. We dedicate an ad hoc committee with lots of community...
Standing committee, it's not ad hoc, standing.
Okay, even better. We dedicate committee time as council members with... You know, some of these can be easily handled.
But that's a staff decision.
Yes, exactly.
We, we have a list in front of us and I'm asking you, I'm pleading you that, that you allow the smoking prohibition to still remain in the active work plan. They're about halfway through their properties. This is for the residents that obviously can't speak up for themselves. I, so I would like to see if that can stay up there. And like I said, we, I created space for it by asking that the drive-throughs can just be combined with zoning code. So you can move your four up and it's still will remain as 12.
We're only moving three up. Parklet plywood vacancy.
Okay, well, there you go.
I don't see the parklets, the plywood vacancy noise ordinance, I don't see those as having urgency, like there's no, they're important. I'm not saying they're not important. We dedicate an ad hoc committee with lots of community.
Standing committee, it's not ad hoc, standing.
Okay, even better. We dedicate committee time as council members with residents and business owners and building owners to downtown, put a lot of staff energy and time into that. It's obviously important, it's obviously a priority for, for a lot of us. But how can we put that ahead of a safe parking policy where people are being criminalized, people are being towed, people are being told they can't park or, or, or live somewhere in their vehicles, right? Like it, it, that's a matter of, of somebody's life, right? Whether or not they're safely parked, whether or not they're parked somewhere where they're subject to danger or towing or losing, or losing their shelter.
Five years, it's been on the books.
Okay, but we, exactly, so we shouldn't remove it. It, we need a policy.
Can we see how the council feels? Yes, that's what it's time to do because that, she's already said that and everybody has said.
And I'll say.
So let's, that's fine, but we need, we can go ahead now and try to give direction. So do, do we need this in the form of a motion or just a thumbs up? Okay, so council member, do you want to try to make it or do you want me to try to make it and you correct me if it's not what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, you can make it.
Okay, so leaving 11 where it is, so instead it's eight, nine, and 10, that would be moving to after 15, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the motion. I will second that.
And then do you want to say too, the, the combination of 10 and the two? So it's not there when we come back?
Sure, combine 10 and two.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Marks.
Combine 10 and two.
And then 13, 14, and 15 move up to eight, nine, and 10, right?
Yeah, move up to eight, nine, and 10, yes, 11 stays where it is.
Right, sorry, so help me, I'm sorry, so eight, nine, and 10 are dropping down.
Right.
But then we're combining 10 and two?
Because you're zoning.
No, I don't know, I know that, but wouldn't that give us one extra slot above the line?
Oh, you're right.
Right?
You're right, because you now.
You can move up all four.
Yeah, you, well, not move up all four, we could keep the one that Councilmember Armendaris is mentioning about, right? We don't have to move safe parking out because if we're combining 10 and two, then we move up the three in the bottom and there you go.
Very good, that's why we have.
Okay, if staff is, yeah, I don't know if these are all the same amount of time, I don't know how to look at it that way, but if that's okay, then that's fine.
We're going to let you know in the follow-up.
Yeah, we'll see in the follow-up, so this is a good start.
It is helpful.
Okay.
This does help.
Okay.
I do appreciate the council acknowledging that that department is getting really squeezed on the day-to-day activity.
Yeah.
And everything here is a good thing to do.
Right.
But we, we don't want to overpromise and we're, we're feeling like.
Yes.
With the vacancies, it's just really hard to get some of the stuff out.
Okay. So, good enough on 11.4? Okay, 11.5, council, this council-initiated agenda policy, and is someone giving, is Bryce going to do a report on this? Okay.
Good evening, council. So a little bit of background, December 11th, 2023, future council-initiated agenda item was issued to, to bring back an item for adoption of a policy or procedure for the submission and consideration of future council-initiated items on the council's agendas. And there's some instruction that was provided for that. One was creating a process to gather information on the future agenda items to allow more specificity and certainty about the nature of future requests, including an estimate of financial impacts or intent of potential action. And this information would then be provided when council considers adding an item to a future agenda. So the current practice is contained in the council norm, section 2.1, which any council member may propose an item for consideration as an agenda item for a future meeting by oral request during a portion of the council meeting designated for future council-initiated agenda items, and that the council would then decide whether to agendaize the item for a future meeting. So staff research fellow Santa Clara County cities, there's included in the, in the staff report pack, I'm sorry, included in the council packet is excerpts from other policies throughout of cities in the county. A few cities do match our current process, but most have some kind of more formal process for submitting agenda item requests. So staff is presenting a proposed policy modeled after a process called the colleagues memorandum. This is a process that's used by Palo Alto and Sunnyvale. It's been modified slightly to meet our agenda process generally. It requires a majority of a quorum of the city council to approve following a written submittal about the item. So provisions about the policy, the council member or members requesting to have an item on the agenda must submit a future agenda item request memorandum or fair memo. Before such a memo can be submitted, the requestor, requesters must meet with the city administrator. The intention of that meeting is to, to discuss items, to understand the administrative operation perspective of the circumstances and potential impacts of the proposed action. After the meeting, the council member or members can then prepare the fair memo, which must comply with the following structure. It must not exceed two pages in length, must be focused on the need for a future agenda item, but without advocating for or against the merits of the agenda item being requested. Must contain a brief summary outlining the request and any relevant background information, contain a fiscal impact estimate and a staffing labor impact estimate, and include copies of any resolutions, proclamations, or documents and other associated material listed to be considered as part of the proposed action. If the memo complies with the policy, then it's placed on an agenda within 30 to 45 days of request under the future agenda items section. Staff will then prepare a brief report discussing initial thoughts and considerations about the item, but will not be preparing a detailed analysis of it. Once that's submitted, the council may then give direction, once it's, once it's considered under the future agenda items section, if items to be brought for a future agenda meeting to discuss and potential action. Now, council may direct the city administrator to agendaize the matter for council action at least two meetings out, allowing city staff sufficient time to conduct its thorough analysis to prepare a staff report recommendation. Those fair memos that are not compliant will be returned back to the submitter with a description precisely how the memo does not comply with the policy, so that is clear for any kind of resubmittal. Turnus, council may direct the policy return as is to council for adoption or with any amendments. Council may also direct work on such policy to cease. Fiscal impact, there's none. We're not anticipating any cost financially for consideration of the policy or implementing the draft as it's discussed, and there would be some increase in staff time, but it's negligible. So recommendations for council to provide direction regarding the draft policy and the next step, staff will then incorporate any changes into, any changes into a revised policy or council consideration action. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Bryce. I, I'm just going to start this, for those who might wonder, you know, why we're doing this, as we just saw, we're a little over halfway through the year and we've had 13 council-initiated items, and that's why it is important that we all, you know, take the time to, to realize what that then does to staff's workload. So I want to start by just saying how much, what a good job I thought this report did in explaining how, the, the number of other cities that you went through to me was, you know, you didn't just take two or three, it's that you took 10, you know, that are in here. And so I thought that was very, very, very helpful myself. So I guess with that, I'll go to council members first and then, and then we'll continue. Okay, so Councilmember Armendaris. Oh, sorry, okay.
I think I'm the only one up in the queue.
Oh, well, my, why does mine show?
Shows Carol.
11.5, council-initiated policy, I see Rebecca, Carol, Zach, and Fred. No?
I'm ready.
Okay.
No, no, I'm on here.
Okay, Carol?
Come on, Carol.
I don't like it. And I would like to see it ceased. I mean, I, I understand that we've had a lot of agenda initiated, initiated items, and I don't mind when a person's introducing an item to get two other council members to support it, but a two-page report, meeting with the city administrator, doing a fiscal report to see it has any, you know, if it needs money, and then it goes 30 to 45 days, it's almost like, come on, council, come to the council meeting, sit down and shut up, you know? I don't like it at all.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. A hundred percent in favor of this. This is what this council used to do before I was elected. I, I used this in 2021 and then it got taken away by the norms. I think it's professional, I think it provides transparency. I'll use a perfect example, on February 5th, when four of us agreed to add a future agenda item, it would have been a lot more helpful because, you know, not a quorum of us saw what the language was, but it'd be really easy to be able to put that language up there. And so that way the general public has a general idea for three weeks what language we're even trying to introduce. And I think it gets council member buy-in. I think it allows them to, you know, do a little work on their, on their own. And, and actually, I, I like it because I like to be pitched ideas. I, I would like to join up with council members on here and I would like other council members to join up, you know, if they think that, that a future agenda item that I might bring up is, is worthy. And like the one that was on tonight, that was, a, a lot of that was done, you know, through the community, they did their own research. So I, I don't see this as a heavy workload, a lot of the stuff that, that we come up is already out there, so I'm, I'm very supportive of it and thank you for bringing that forward.
Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, and, and maybe I'm confused here because I, I agree with both Councilmember Marks and Hilton. So for me, in reading this, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I read it incorrectly, but it seemed just like another way to discourage us from making, or adding agenda items and making it more complicated, right? And that's the opposite of how it should be. Obviously, like Councilmember Hilton said, if, if a community, group of community members wants something, or a council member wants something, we have every right to bring that to a council without having to write a two-page, three-page essay on why we should have this. My understanding is that we vote on a possible agenda item, and then the city manager can go out and tell us the impact of it, and then we can take that in consideration and see if it's something that's important or not. And, you know, the city staff figures that out. So that's how I read this, is that it keeps, it kind of like discourages us, like, I, I don't have, you know, eight hours to work on this, you know, possible agenda item. It should be how, I like it how it is, is we have something that we want to bring forward, we vote on it, and then we figure it out that way. But this is not, this is making us do all the work, right? Why would I want to, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean.
Okay, wait, Councilmember Armendaris said she.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Councilmember Bracco.
So just a couple clarifying questions. So to write the memo, we have to include why we need this agenda item, right? Without advocating for its merit? I, I feel like, like that's quite a dance and I don't know those steps.
Thank you.
How do we, how do we, how do we do that? Like I love, I love the idea of things being ministerially approved and, and applied and laying out all the facts and the language that we want. I do appreciate that, I do appreciate this, using memos, that some of the best councils, you know, that I get to participate in or witness, use this structure and it works well. But I'm just wondering how, because that language would leave things too arbitrary, right? To somebody saying, well, that's, you're advocating for this merit, but in fact, I feel like I'm stating the need for it, right? Because I'm supporting it. So it, it just seems like a real ambiguous line.
You could take it out and, but that is actually the practice that you currently have when you bring up a future council-initiated items that you're not supposed to advocate for or against because you're not allowed to have a discussion.
That we do all the time?
I think it's.
Yeah, if I could interrupt, I think this, the exact issue you focus on is the one that, that is the awkwardness with the current system where we can talk about something without really advocating because it's not agendized. So, and I think the concept here is by doing it in writing, it'll just be a lot clearer what it is. My suggestion would be that probably the fiscal analysis and the staffing labor estimate may be not things that ought to be in the memo because that's something that the staff would come up with really, not with, I don't think, I think a normal council person wouldn't really know. That's the point of sending it to the staff, is to get that information.
And I think what it may appear is that that was council needing to do, but these are things that we want to help you develop as you bring your agenda. If you, you have an item and you're not aware of the fiscal impact, we can do that for you. But we like to have that conversation so we can know exactly when we get that agenda item in council, what you want.
Yeah.
We, we have, and this was a very good example, this, this just last issue where I had to figure out, what am I going to do with a draft resolution? Because I didn't, you know, one was going to be one side or the other, I didn't have good council direction on what to do, so I did the best we could, but I think that could have, we could have used your help.
Yeah.
So on that one, you're going to say, what's the fiscal impact? There's none. What's the labor impact? There's none. It's just kind of that conversation saying, let me tell you what I'm scared of, or I, I want to help you address.
If I can add.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so remember, this, this step, this stage is after the meeting with the city administrator. So the concept is that some of that conversation about impacts, because if you remember from the meeting discussion, it's to understand that, you know, the operational, you know, circumstances and potential impacts. So it's, it gives an opportunity to say, in the meeting with the city administrator, yeah, there's going to be some moderate staffing impact at this particular issue. It allows that to be communicated out to the council as a whole on that future agenda item report, so that everybody knows when it's coming for council, a little hint about what, what's really being asked in that item.
And will the memo be public record?
Yes, there would be, including the agenda packet.
So it's a, it's a matter of the line, you know, because you, you have to be able to say briefly why you're asking for it, which means you have to speak to what are the benefits, why are you promoting it, but not go so far as to, you know, continue talking, like which is what happens when we're here. And so that's, that's, so I think that language needs to stay, it's just that you, you have to be able to do both. You have to be able to say why you're asking for it, but not go on and on so as to be advocating, you know, for it. It, well, it says two pages.
It says.
Not, not to exceed, you can do it in a paragraph if you want. This is actually something that helps, I think, council members who want to push something forward because it helps the rest of the council understand what you're asking and whether or not you're going to support it. A lot of times what's happened is we get requested or sight unseen and, and, and people just feel like it, it's, it's just mean or something to just say no, instead of really analyzing what it is. And the process of going through the memo, however short or lengthy it turns out to be, is all an education process for the person asking for it. Maybe there's something you're going to discover that you didn't know comes with what you're asking. So I, I completely support everything that Councilmember Hilton said on this particular subject. I know. And so, yeah, so that's what I'm going to say. Now, Councilmember Bracco and then Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, I, I like this because since I've been on council, this has changed over and over again. When I got on council, you had to go to the city manager or the mayor, they were the only ones that could put it on. Then there was a little coup and it was, you had to get three other council members on your side to go to the city administrator and put it on. And it, it just kept changing. So this way we'll have a policy and that'll stop, it'll be one way and it'll stay that way.
Okay, Councilmember Klein is next, and then Councilmember Tovar.
Just being new to this whole process and trying to understand it, I think it's ambiguous to me. So this, because I already, if I have questions, I already go to staff about it. So this just gives you a structure, understanding of what to do and kind of get it done so that it may not be a good idea when it all flushes.
Exactly.
And, and then you just go away.
All right, Councilmember Tovar.
Yeah, well, let me ask, because I want clarification for me, obviously. So part of this, obviously, it's stating that we meet with our city administrator to talk about whatever agenda item we're looking to kind of bring forward, correct? And during that discussion, Jimmy will give us feedback, whatever it may be, but it's not going to be a barrier where Jimmy says, no, this is not something that we can do. We can still bring it back if that's kind of, if there's a disagreement, right?
I am just your advisor.
No, 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 I know, I'm saying, no, I just, I just want clarification on that.
If I, if I haven't been able to do it before, I'm not going to be able to.
I do the answer, I just want clarification because it can read that, that way, right? And I want everyone to know that this is us working together to come to a common ground and say, this is what it's gonna cost, whatever it is, if Jimmy says you're crazy as well, I still want to take it back to council, right? I mean, that's, yeah, okay.
He calls, I'm sure, a lot of us crazy.
Yeah, I know.
But they, they do this, whereas we're just coming with these ideas, but, I mean, we're kind of grappling at it, we need that understanding, and understanding how it impacts costs, how it impacts staff, or lack of staff that can do this, you know, just understanding and prior, you know, helps us, it helped me, I'm just talking about myself.
Yeah. Okay, so, thank you, Bryce. So with that, I, I would like to, I mean, are we good with questions for now? Because I learned so much in reading what all these other cities do, I have two things that I would like to ask the council. I think they're minor, but that's why I have to ask. Number one, in the initial statement of the policy, does anybody object to inserting the words within the subject matter jurisdiction? Okay, you're, you're saying, yeah, good.
Where do you want this again?
In, in the very beginning, so go to the very beginning of the policy. First it says purpose, background, and then it says policy. And the first sentence is, "Future council-initiated agenda items present an opportunity for city councilmembers to request agenda items," and I'm suggesting right here to insert, "within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city of Gilroy, to be added to the future council meetings for discussion and potential action." Yes, okay. Okay? And then the, the last thing is, in, again, reading other cities, this, the future council-initiated item on our agenda ought to move to the end of the agenda, not at the beginning, in, in respect and, and to prioritize the things that are already on the agenda. That's how the others, it's, so it's, it's there with city administrator, we can do it right before, or it doesn't matter to me, but that'd be at the end, where city administrator report is, and where, that's where you make the request. Okay, okay, so those are the two things, if everybody's okay with that, then that's council direction to come back at the next meeting under consent.
What about Andy's suggestion?
Oh, which one is that?
Yeah, in terms of stacking labor impact estimate.
Well, I think my suggestion was really on the assumption that councilmembers are supposed to sort of come up with that, but I see it, it is not exactly that.
It's not, yeah, it's like, it's like Jimmy, the thing- It means, it means you can, it's just, it's just saying, identify what the fiscal impact is, have staff tell you what that could be. The answer, for many of it, is gonna be, might be none.
Or, or you might say, we don't know yet, staff would have to figure this out, too. I mean, I can see that, you know, certainly a memo could propose questions and say this will have to be determined.
Because the amount of staff time is limited by the policy, so if they don't know, then it's up to council to agendize it, and then we're gonna know. All right, okay. Okay, so it's just about ten o'clock, how does everyone feel about moving eleven point six to March fourth, and we go into closed? I don't know.
I mean, listen, I say go for it.
I'd rather go into closed session.
I, I would rather go to closed session.
Can we just motion like last time?
It's a report you can't change.
Can we just motion to approve?
Second?
Sure.
Okay, fine.
Third, see?
All right.
Sorry, Tom, what is it? You're good with punting, or just doing it?
You can change it.
Okay, let's do it.
I already motioned, yeah.
Okay, so we, so we just did item eleven point six?
No, we just did-
We haven't voted, but I did make a motion.
We just did eleven point five.
No, but you're suggesting-
I was suggesting moving eleven point six, but they're saying, let's do it, so-
Right, because a motion for approval.
Of eleven point six.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, she motioned to accept and file the report.
Who seconded it, okay? Motion made by Councilmember Armendaris.
You do any public comment?
Okay, public comment? Okay, no public comment. Harjo, do you need to say anything? Okay.
Thank you.
Then vote.
I'll just note for the record that it was a clean, a clean audit.
We trust you, Harjo.
Thank you.
We need to vote, everybody, we haven't voted.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blanton?
Yes. Okay, Andy, take, oh, wait, city attorney-
City administrator report.
Yeah, no report, city attorney?